Good evening and welcome to the April fourteenth, twenty twenty-five City Council Roundtable Meeting. I am Mayor Ross and tonight's meeting is brought to you live using video conferencing technology provided by Zoom. And tonight's recording will be posted on the city's YouTube channel. So welcome to everyone and thank you for joining us. City Clerk Dean, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Benson?
Here.
Councilmember Watten?
Here.
Councilmember Holloway?
Here.
Councilmember Washington?
Here.
Councilmember Cotton?
Here.
Here, excuse me.
Councilmember Christensen?
Here.
Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
Mayor Ross?
I am here. Thank you. So we move to our first item of business, which is to approve the agenda, which is the roundtable. We have a motion to approve the agenda.
The move second.
We move by Mayor Poojam Holloway and second by Councilmember Christensen. Is there any discussion? See none, all in favor, see aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any pos nay? And the motion passes and the agenda is approved. So tonight we have a petition for vacation of certain right-of-way. City Attorney Burke will introduce this item. We will need to adjourn the roundtable meeting at six fifty PM for a regular meeting starting at seven PM. So if we're unable to hear all the testimony or hear from anyone who wishes to speak on this matter will be continued to April twenty eighth, twenty twenty-five at six PM. And can you please obtain the sign-in sheets? I think she's introducing it later. Right, yeah. So let's check, if you would check to see if everyone has signed up. If you wish to speak tonight, you do need to sign up. Did everyone sign up? So we'll now open the public hearing. And as proceeding, the community is invited to provide comments regarding the proposal of the city to vacate the right-of-way abutting text parcel number seven eight four nine seven two 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 zero 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 six four, commonly known as three nine one nine four Park Street. Only persons attending in person will have the opportunity to speak. No online public comment will be accepted during the public hearing. Written comments submitted in person, email or mail will be sent to cityclerk@snawquamiwa.gov, which were, these were accepted by three PM today. So those wishing to speak during the public comment must sign up, and you did. Speakers will be called in order. And please state your name and city of residence for the record. Direct comments to the council as a whole and not to individual members. And note that this is not a time to ask questions of council, mayor, or staff or engage in debate. And you'll have three minutes to speak and we will advise you at thirty seconds to please finish up your comments. So we will now open it to the members of the public. We have... Irene? Who's this Irene or?
The gentleman.
Jeremy?
Sir, did you want to speak?
Who signed up? I cannot read your name. Johnny? You've signed up, so please, you can make your way to the podium and speak. Right. It has to be for this particular subject, and so it'll be three minutes.
So my understanding is that you are, the city is buying a piece of property that's next to our property?
Please say your name and city.
My name is Johnny Jones and I live in Seattle. But I was part of, on the title for a property that my son owns next to this property I believe we're here to talk about tonight. And so I believe you said we can't ask questions, so that's what I'm here to do is ask questions. If I'm not able to ask questions, then I guess this is really irrelevant, but obviously we bought that property with Tykor as the title, and there certainly are some legal ramifications to that. And so I don't know exactly what it is you're intending with that property next to our property. But that's what I'm here to find out.
I think it'll be more information as we come forward and have our discussions, so.
Okay. So, and I'm not allowed to ask questions otherwise, right? So I'll just get the information from all of you, I assume, and then we'll go from there.
Feel free to say whatever you want to say.
Mayor?
At this point. Councilmember Johnson?
I was wondering if a member of the public could ask rhetorical questions that they're not intending to have answered from council right now, such that we could maybe take notes about what the public is concerned about.
That's true.
Rhetorical question on this particular case is that the property line is on our property. That was from twenty-some years ago. And our question would be, what is your intention to do with that property line? And how we would pursue that with our own interests? Litigation if we need to. It doesn't go far into our property line, but it does little ways. And of course, we bought that with Tykor as our title, telling us this is all cleared. We didn't know anything about this until later. I believe this is all for a waterfront walk down the road that you all have been working on for a long time, or at least should I say the city of Snoqualmie has been, which is a great thing. But it is on our property, beautiful piece of property that we own. And so my question would be, what is your intention with the property line? No one's going to answer?
No, we cannot answer right now.
Okay. So today is just kind of providing information? Okay? And at some point I would be able to come back and we would be able to come back and pursue those questions?
Yeah, I think a lot of the information's in the packet too, so there's a lot of information available right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. So we've come to the end of public hearing regarding the petition for vacation or certain right-of-way. And it's closing at six oh six PM. So we'll have City Attorney Dean Burke explain the proceedings.
All right, thank you, Mayor. The city of Snoqualmie has received a petition for a vacation of right-of-way hearing. NWBF LLC has met the legal requirements under RCW thirty-five point seven nine to request and have council set a right-of-way vacation hearing. Counsel will hear arguments regarding the right-of-way vacation hearing. We will hear from petitioner's counsel, Mr. Dean Williams and Mr. Steve DeShazo. Following those two gentlemen, we will hear from Ms. Kim Pratt from Madrona Law. The petitioners will go first. There will be ten minutes of testimony or presentation. The city clerk will track time, and when the lights flash, your time is almost up. Counsel may allow more time. However, if additional time is allowed, it should be granted equally to the petitioners and Ms. Pratt. Following presentation, counsel may ask questions. Counsel members, please raise your hand if you wish to ask a question. And Mayor Ross will call on you to ask your question. Similarly, additional time may be granted, but should be done so equally to both sides. Following petitioner, Ms. Pratt will have ten minutes to present and ten minutes of questions and answer. After Ms. Pratt, Mr. Williams may return to the podium to give five minutes of rebuttal. And after that, Ms. Pratt may be returned to the podium to provide five minutes of sub-rebuttal. We do have to adjourn by six fifty PM because there is a seven PM meeting following in this space. If we run out of time, we will reconvene at six PM on Monday, April twenty-eighth. After Mr. Williams and Mr. DeShazo and Ms. Pratt have had their chances to speak and answer questions, counsel may deliberate on whether to vacate the right-of-way in public from the dais. Questions regarding potential litigation can be discussed in an executive session pursuant to RCW forty-two point three zero point one one zero I.
Thank you. So first of all, we will start with Dean Williams or DeShazo?
DeShazo. My name is Steve DeShazo.
Okay. So you...
I'm in-house counsel for NWBF. I'll just, I'm going to go first with some background and then introduce Dean with more information on the petition. What would you do if the city told you your houses were worth negative two hundred and twelve dollars and needed to be demolished within thirty days? That's what the city of Snoqualmie staff told my client regarding the three nine one nine four Southeast Park Street property. What started this dispute two years ago was NWBF attempting to sell the three nine one nine four house on the open market. Interested buyers were told by the city staff that their property was in litigation with the city and not to buy it. Offers at the time were in the four hundred thousand dollar range. NWBF has never contested the city's right to acquire the three nine one nine four property via eminent domain. What we have disagreed over is the just compensation requirement of the Fifth Amendment. Is a home that rents for eighteen hundred dollars per month worth one thousand dollars? Ten thousand dollars? City staff seem to think so. The negative overall value of the home was based on a twenty fourteen appraisal. So in twenty twenty-three, NWBF requested a new appraisal. That new appraisal was also premised on the supposition that the home exists in an illegal location and must be demolished. Given the supposedly illegal location of the house, the city's more recent appraisal by Murray Brackett in December of twenty twenty-three concluded the value of the property was ten thousand dollars. Forty thousand dollars minus the cost of demolition, which was thirty thousand, estimated. That's one point seven percent of the King County Tax Assessor's valuation of the land and improvements, five hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. When NWBF pointed out the disparity to city staff, we were told that's a problem to take up with King County. Professional appraisals NWBF had done last year concluded the home was worth around five hundred and seventy to six hundred thousand dollars. Those values were calculated based on the monthly rental revenue of the property. When NWBF attempted to bring these competing appraisals to the city's attention, we were told that the city could not consider outside appraisals, only its own. I've tried contacting the mayor on this topic via phone and email. Since NWBF first attempted to sell this property in January of twenty twenty-three, January of twenty twenty-three, the city attorney Bob, the assistant city attorney Anna, and the city's paralegal Rena all have left for other positions. I've asked the city's current counsel, Kim, to communicate with me on this topic. She refused, preferring to communicate only through our hired outside counsel, Dean Williams. I also asked him to copy me on her emails to Dean, which she declined to do. We're bringing this issue to the city council's attention out of a lack of other options. We would love for the city to build its River Rock Trail with a gondola and a footbridge and a hiking trail. This all sounds great. I grew up a few miles downstream. Is it not a gondola? I grew up a few miles downstream. I used to work for the Forest Service in the Mount Baker Snoqualmie National Forest, just up the road in North Mend. I know this is a beautiful area. But if the city wants NWBS property as a high priority target, it must pay a reasonable price. I'm going to turn it over now to Dean, or outside counsel.
Good evening, my name is Dean Williams, outside counsel for NWBF LLC. We understand that the city wants this property for a park and we're not trying to stand in the city's way. We're just asking for fairness and recognition of the facts. If there was an elderly resident in this home who had lived in and been a member of the city of Snoqualmie for decades, I sincerely hope that city staff would not treat them the same as they have us. If they did, I'm sure there would be headlines. City demands senior citizen demolish home for ten thousand dollars to make way for park. Now, it's far easier to diminish the plight of my client, whose primary business is residential development. We freely acknowledge that a certain amount of risk comes with that job. However, we did not invite this situation. We did not speculatively invest in a bad property. We obtained title to this property by way of foreclosure on a security interest, which we had hoped we never would need to do. There is no record of the city objecting to the existence of this home in its current location for over eighty years. I have in my hand proof that the city has issued permits for this building, including review by the city's building department, for which the applicant paid fees to the city and obtained inspections of approval. Imagine our surprise upon hearing that city staff told our buyer that the property was in litigation. To be clear, there has never been litigation by the city regarding this property. This was a gross mischaracterization. When asked why the city had not begun condemnation or any other action, my client is told that this is in the city's ten-year pile. Years later, the city demanded we demolish the structure within thirty days, claiming that we don't have a right-of-way use permit under Snoqualmie Municipal Code twelve nineteen zero one zero, a code that was adopted in twenty seventeen, eighty years after the structure was originally built. And at least forty years after it was converted into a residence by permit, where the city signed off on the water closet, urinal, sink fountain, tub, shower, clothes, washer, dishwasher. And they paid a fee for each of these inspections. Well, clearly, part of the city's ten-year plan is lowering the value of my client's property. And so while we are not a senior citizen, and the city is not trying to demolish our home and house to my client on the street, there is still a grave injustice here. The city knows that we are renting this property, so under the city's demand, someone will lose their home. Thank goodness my client has the resources to protect their rights. We are focused on creative solutions. After eighty-seven years, it is not in the public interest and in fact would degrade the public's trust in government to capitalize on the present situation and compel demolition of this home. To the merits of our vacation petition, our request meets every criteria and the city council has discretion to grant it. Our materials explain in detail how we satisfy the necessary conditions. Notably, counsel does not have to weigh the public and private interest. Certainly, my client stands to gain. But under the law, including London versus City of Seattle cited by the city's attorney, there need only be some element of public purpose. It rests with this counsel to determine whether it is sufficient to grant the petition. First and foremost, there is the public interest of confidence in government. If after eighty years it is discovered that there may be some defect in my title, is the city going to come and take my home away? Second, there is the public interest in maintaining existing housing stock. One less home is one less home. Third, there is NWBS offer to dedicate additional right-of-way for Park Street, for which we have found no formal dedication. There's a map here which has some annotations on it, but the whole of it was submitted for the record. Right now, in nineteen ninety-seven, a survey was done. The surveyor noted, I don't see a dedication for Park Street, so I'm going off the King County Assessors map. That showed Park Street right here. We found a nineteen nineteen survey from the King County Roads Division that shows Park Street down here, basically eliminating this eleven hundred square foot area to the south of what this map shows. We're proposing to dedicate that to the city. I believe right now it's a two-lane road. Once the River Walk's in place, maybe you want to add a turning lane to the middle. This will give you the room to do that. That is a public benefit. Since the city has not produced and we have not found after exhaustive research any record of dedicating any of Park Street to the city, the city can only claim to own the part that's actually in use. And what we're saying is clearly Park Street doesn't go through our house as it physically sits on the land. And since there's no dedication for the area under our house with regard to Park Street, the city cannot claim to own it. We will grant the city this area. And fourth, there can be no doubt that the city has the authority to vacate Shusman Avenue for the public purpose of settling a dispute. Yes, NWBF is being blunt in stating that unless the city vacates Shusman Avenue, this will lead to litigation. But the city is giving us no other reasonable choice. As you, ask yourself if you would spend one hundred, two hundred thousand dollars to litigate over five hundred thousand dollars that you knew to be rightfully yours. And we believe that no court or jury will side with the city if it comes to this. It is in the public interest to vacate Shusman Avenue and settlement of our quiet title claim. That's why we noted the city of Snohomish city code that specifically addresses the Ballenger Code non-user statute situation. It's simply a more efficient way to resolve this. To the merits of our non-user statute claim, we believe the photos and testimony we have provided, together with there being no contrary evidence to weigh against it, demonstrate that the relevant area was clearly never used for public ingress or egress during the relevant period. I would... Got just a little bit more?
So I guess the next step is questions and answers, so do you want to take part of that as?
Sure. I'll find a way to work in that additional information in answering your questions.
I have a question.
Councilmember Benson?
What were you about to say?
Thank you, Councilmember Benson. I just wanted to note that the requirement that for compensation for the right-of-way being vacated is a may, not a shall. It's up to you. We've offered to pay for the right-of-way, especially given that the city doesn't believe it's worth very much, apparently, based on our valuations that we receive from the city. It's a may, not a shall. Same when it comes to reserving an easement right. I would ask that you not reserve an easement right, because I'm sure there's city regulations saying you can't build a structure on top of a utility easement. So if the city reserved a utility easement to itself, I don't think that would mean much status quo change for us. Other than that, I would ask that you grant the petition.
Any questions? Councilmember Cotton?
Pardon me, please bear with me. I have some questions. I read through all the paperwork you submitted. Do you want me to just start with one question?
Yeah, we'll just do one question at a time.
Okay. And including, I guess I'll start chronologically, going back to some of the maps that you included. When you look at the eighteen ninety plat, it was very squarely laid out with between all the blocks and all the lots. So block three, lot one, which corresponds to your client's, block four, lot one. And also the lots behind it all line up very clearly right along Shusman Avenue. So block three, lot one, is actually the home behind your client's home. And what I am seeing, most notably, when I look at the picture that's behind you especially, is I can see the car in the driveway for that one. And then I see the loop that runs around your client's property. I believe that runs through your property if you're next door to them. And what my, one of my questions to you is, in looking at this map, one is that Shusman or the right-of-way, that has nothing to do, we can do Battle of the Arborous Leader, but let's flip back to that previous page. We, is that, that right-of-way runs all the way down to the river. To me, if you're looking at your picture that you submitted from the eighteen ninety plat, and so that tells me that that is a public right-of-way that goes down. So you're, we're not talking about block four, we're talking about block three behind it. So that right-of-way runs to the river, that is a right-of-way for people to gain access to the river. So that has continued in perpetuity to still be that. The other question that goes along with this, the client's behind you, so it would be thirty-nine one nine zero Southeast Park Street. How do they access their home?
Mr. Blaney, I believe is attending. I spoke to him on Friday.
Speaking to the, speaking to the mic, great, thanks.
I think you're talking about the Wes Blaney house. I spoke to him on Friday, he was concerned, but I think he's in attendance on Zoom, you could ask him.
I, yeah, I have no idea.
He would lose access if you acquire this.
No, no, no. How is he accessing it now? What right-of-way?
This U-turn horseshoe is the way he gets to his house, here.
Okay, okay. And how, so how does he do that? Does he use the right-of-way side?
He's worried about it.
No, does he use the right-of-way side? We're not taking...
You'd have to ask.
I would, attempting...
It has another public use, is that it does serve as a way for block three to access that lot one at that time. And through all of this hundred years of debate, eighty years of structure, I sincerely believe that that has been able to be used for multiple public use services. So I mean, I sincerely hope that you've taken that into consideration.
I will attempt to answer your questions. I don't believe my client intends to deprive anybody of access to their home. I would note that under the nineteen ninety-seven survey, we're showing, I think, three point eight, three feet here and three point eight feet here between the structure and the boundary line, where we would be asking the city to vacate. So three point eight feet, I, you know, we're certainly not asking the city to give us this entire driveway here. I don't think that they drive within three feet of the home. This roadway, to me, is outside of where we're asking the city to vacate. It would probably actually be in this neighboring subdivision, Snoqualmie Meadowbrook, where that road is, on property that the city already owns. I think that's good. Does that cover?
It doesn't, because, you know, again, looking at these plots, they're very clearly lined up. So I can, you know, where your client's home is built is far over the boundary of the original...
Right here.
Yeah, block four, lot one.
And it's been there since nineteen thirty-eight.
You know, sometimes people in city are busy doing other things. So I'm not making excuses for how that slipped through the cracks for all these years, except that we probably didn't have computers then and, you know, weren't able to. And I didn't get to see the, your reference to the permitting that was made by the city. So is that in another packet that you're going to be giving us?
We submitted these tonight. We were gathering those records still. I believe my client has handed you a copy of a permit application here that was granted in nineteen eighty-five. The site, it may have not drawn the city's attention because it refers to a different address. That is because the person who submitted this permit owned, I believe, more than one parcel right here. In the legal descriptions in the permit application, it refers to lot one, block three, the home you were just speaking about, and lot one, block four. However, the permit in detail describes converting a six hundred and thirty-four plus or minus structure from storage to a residence. And this is the only structure on those parcels that fits that description, which is why we believe this permit clearly addresses the building we're talking about now.
We have it.
And so...
Go ahead.
To complete my answer to your question, maybe it just escaped notice for eighty years, but with all due fairness, we believe that when the city has signed off on something, it would be unfair to later just take it away after so many people have depended on that.
Councilmember Christensen, you had a question?
Yeah, so just so that I understand, the permits that you've just walked up, the one copy for counsel, this is, these are the permits that you're referring to in your petition where you said that the city has signed off on this at numerous points?
There are, there are others. In two thousand and ten...
Included in the packet? And it's a little bit difficult to kind of be going through and preparing for something if the underlying documents aren't there? And assuming that you've relied on them in your packet, I would have...
I apologize if they weren't sent earlier. We received these in a public records request from the city six months ago. So it's been, it was surprising to us to hear in the city attorney's response that, you know, we haven't provided this information. I believe I have attached some of these materials, not the nineteen eighty-five application, to prior communications with the city attorney. I was in Hawaii last week dealing with, that should be no excuse, but I was on vacation with my family while trying to gather the records to respond to the letter from the city attorney from last Monday.
But so do we have a full and complete record now?
I emailed this document, sorry to cut you off. I emailed this document to Attorney Burke and Attorney Pratt at the start of this evening. There should be a digital copy in the record.
Councilperson Johnson?
I'm curious if it's a typical practice for someone who's inspecting, say, you said urinals and stuff like that, to also investigate lot lines and stuff while they're engaged in that activity?
That's a good question. I would say I was an attorney in nineteen eighty-five. I don't know what was regularly reviewed then.
So...
I...
So first of all, so councils, do you want to extend the question answer about five more minutes or five minutes? Okay, ask it five minutes, please.
I would say in my experience, an application as comprehensive as a change of use these days certainly would require maybe a survey or some sort of documentation as to the location of the home. And, I mean, many of these records have been available just by looking online on the King County Assessors parcel information for twenty years. Nineteen eighty-five, not so much, but certainly the plat map has been on file with the city for a hundred years.
Any other questions? Counselor Cotton?
Pardon me. Also in regards to, well, the title searches, so you're, you referred to your Old Republic Title Companies search. And in there, they gave a description that, let's see, which, which was it? In your February twenty, of twenty-five correspondence, there, your Exhibit A, it has listed in there the vacated by Ordinance one-ninety-four. What is, are you referring to the city ordinance?
Yes, that would be, one-twenty-four, I believe, and my understanding of the history here is the original Park Street came straight across here and flipped these blocks.
Yes.
And sometime in nineteen-ten, I believe it is, there was an ordinance, number one-twenty-four, vacating this portion of Park Street and this portion of Schusman Avenue. I don't know why, but later in nineteen fifty-two, they said, oh, remember that thing we did in nineteen-ten, which is why it's reflected again in the record.
So I went back and looked through the City Municipal Code, and I found Ordinance one-ninety-four. And it says in Ordinance one-ninety-four that you have cited multiple times in your title search. One-ninety-four is a prohibition of privies in the city of Snoqualmie. And so, but if you actually go and read the maps that have been included in various surveys, there's actually written on several of those vacated Ordinance one-twenty-four. Now, so somebody, I don't know what this one-ninety-four that you folks are citing is about, or if it was just a little sloppiness where it should have been Ordinance one-twenty-four. We do have Ordinance one-twenty-four, not from your paperwork, but from city paperwork. And it says that, that does talk about the vacating of Park Avenue abutting lots one and two of Block Three, lots one and two of Block Four, and also the street abutting on the east side of Block Three to the county road, Snoqualmie Falls. And in that ordinance, it says the property, and this was dated on December twenty-seventh, nineteen-ten, it says that property was actually vacated to James Christman, his heirs, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, all that section. What I also didn't see, which I would think you guys would want to follow up on, is James Christman, what did he own? That he got this needed to him? Did he own from Block Three? Did he own Lot One from Block Four? Did he own both of them? So I would like to know who actually got that, that deeding of the Park Street that was moved in nineteen-ten and provided that allotment as far as it was recorded in nineteen-ten. So did you folks pursue the, the James Christman angle as far as who all of that vacated property went to? Ownership-wise?
By statute, when, when a right-of-way is vacated, it goes to the abutting property owner. Now.
Which abutting property owner?
The nearest one. So if you vacate the whole road, half of it goes to the north and half of it goes to the south, or east-west, as it may be. Now, what they do after that is up to them. They can do boundary line adjustments, they can deed different portions to different people.
But, yeah, it was all deeded to one person.
So counsel, do you want to extend additional five minutes? Or would you take your from the?
Probably running low on time.
We probably need to hear from, from Madrona.
Okay, so we can hear from Madrona, I think there's additional rebuttal and stuff.
We do have the ability to go to the twenty-eighth if counsel really wants to hear more. Additional day.
Did you get your question answered?
Oh, anymore. We'll wait for the rebuttal. I'd like to hear what.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, appreciate it.
We have Kim Pratt with, with Madrona provide testimony for ten minutes. You'll have to do it the, there, thanks. But these are his originals.
Well, counsel, I'm going to start with your job tonight, and that is to see if there is a public purpose to vacate Schusman Avenue, the portion that petitioner is requesting that you vacate. And in order to do that, there ha, you can only vacate if there is a public purpose. You have heard from petitioners what they say their public purpose is, and you have received material from the city in regard to the Riverwalk and how that's been in the plans and where it would go, and that being a purpose for this right-of-way. So I'm going to start with Schusman Avenue since that is what they are asking you to vacate. And as you saw in the documents, it was eighteen ninety when that was, when Schusman Avenue was dedicated, and it's thirty feet wide. I would show that to you, but my computer is not cooperating. I can try one more time, but what, that right-of-way, as Councilmember Cotton said, it was very, those lots were very easy to find. We had sixty by, you know, a hundred-and-twenty by sixty is very, very easy. With Schusman on the end there, only thirty feet wide. As I understand, NWBF's, one of their arguments that they made to you in their, their last round of material, is that two trees located somewhere close or in Schusman Avenue that germinated sometime during the twenty-year period eighteen-eighty to nineteen-hundred, they blocked the public from using Schusman Avenue. So what I would say first is between eighteen ninety and eighteen ninety-five, this would not have been an automobile area. First automobiles didn't even show up in Seattle until nineteen-hundred. So we're talking about, did those two trees that maybe were in Schusman or close block the public from using that thirty feet? And I'm going to say no. That they have not proven that to you, that those two trees in that photograph and the declaration from their arborist show you that, that thirty-foot right-of-way was blocked. And the case law talks about that the burden is, is on the petitioner to show you that those five years that the right-of-way was unopened to the public and, and not capable of being traveled, and that someone else had physical possession of Schusman Avenue and claimed it adverse to the public. You've been provided no information that shows you to it, you know, that shows you that. And that information would be very hard to give to you. We're talking about eighteen ninety to eighteen ninety-five. So I'm not saying they haven't looked hard, but there is not, that evidence has not been provided to you. In terms of the city permitting, when you have a chance to look at what the petitioners gave to you tonight, those documents do not say that that house is anywhere on Schusman Avenue. Not at all. It uses addresses, it uses the legal descriptions, and the legal descriptions do not include the area they are encroaching on in Schusman Avenue. So that inspector would not have known. If it is as easy as petitioners may want you to think that, oh, they, you know, they should have looked at the parcel map or something and, and seen that it was encroaching, well, maybe NWBF should have done that when they loaned on this property and then when they foreclosed. If it's that easy to find out that this house is encroaching more than halfway on Schusman Avenue, then they should have found out too. Because I believe, you know, there's sophisticated lenders, is what I'm understanding them saying. So, but the permits, when they came in, did not tell city personnel that this house is sitting in the right-of-way. And I don't know if those owners knew. I'm not saying that they came in and they were trying to hide this from the city. They probably had no idea. It's been there a long time and they just didn't know. No one, they didn't know. But in nineteen ninety-seven, there was that survey where a surveyor shows that the property is encroaching in Schusman Avenue, and that survey is recorded. And I'll, I'll tell you that the, the King County Assessor's records that the petitioners provided to you, it also does not show anyone that this house is built on Schusman Avenue. It gives a legal description, and when you look at that very carefully, one, there's two of them. One is scribbled out and, and one is you can read, and, and it does not show you that the house is in Schusman Avenue. And there's a case, Gillis versus King County, forty-two, Washington Second, three-seventy-three, and it's from nineteen fifty-three. And there, the court does comment on the fact that the permits did not tell the city that this building was in the right-of-way. It gave addresses, it gave legal descriptions, and, and they noted that. That was important for the court in that case. Now, I'll, I'll turn to Park Street. And as I understand NWBF's argument, they aren't asking the city to vacate any of Park Street, but they're saying Park Street is so messed up, it wasn't dedicated, it's in the wrong place, that we'll help you, you know, we'll dedicate that to you if you vacate Schusman. I really don't think that Park Street is, is that much of a problem for counsel, that you should vacate Schusman Avenue, even if it wasn't dedicated. And we have also not found a dedication, but I have not searched for that. But even if it's not, the city has at the very least a prescriptive easement for the portion of Park Avenue that the city and the public use right now. So petitioners can claim that they own that, but the city has an easement over it at the very least. Now, if you did want to expand it, you know, then, then you would need to talk to the owners of wherever you wanted to expand Park Street. We did receive, well, let's see. As proof of the, that this Park Street is the right location, this nineteen-nineteen survey that you heard about tonight and in the documents, counsel says in his letter to you, the attorney says in the letter to you, we have received additional information that King County considers the nineteen-nineteen survey of Park Street to be the official survey. Please look at what they gave you as an exhibit, that, that, that email from Jess Jones, and Ms. Jones is an Assistant Public Records Officer and Records Management Project Manager, and she sent six links to surveys nineteen-oh-seven to nineteen-forty-nine. Nowhere, nowhere in that email does she say nineteen-nineteen is the official survey of Park Street. She doesn't say that. There are six surveys in there, and if you look at them, they show Park Street in three different places. And I, I would particularly point your attention to the nineteen ninety, nineteen ninety-seven survey, which you have in documents, I know I provided to you. And then if you look at a nineteen-twenty-nine survey that they got from Jess Jones, and it shows you the same curve. The nineteen-twenty-nine curve is the curve you see in the nineteen-ninety-seven survey. And all of the measurements are the same, except one, the very corner at the bottom of Lot One. And it's about two inches off. One, the nineteen-ninety survey says it was nine inches, or nine feet, sorry, and the nineteen-twenty-nine survey says it was eleven feet. So nineteen's ninety-seven tracks with the night, that nineteen-twenty-nine survey. So I don't believe that NWBF has proven to you that Park Street, where it's built today, is problematic for the city. But I think that what is important is you at least have a prescriptive easement over that area. And the, the public use has been explained to you in Dylan Gamble's material that he submitted explaining the ongoing public purpose for this area in Schusman Avenue that NWBF seeks to vacate. And because there is that public purpose, our recommendation is to not vacate that portion of Schusman Avenue. And I am happy to answer any questions.
Counselor, do you have any questions? Counselor Benson?
It seems like there is a confusing history with Park Street and with that property, though. And the fact that permits were granted, and I understand you're saying that the permit, the permit, the permits granted did not include the address.
Does include an address. It includes an address of Lot One, Block Four, not Schusman Avenue, where the house is.
This is the thing that's, that's sticking to me, is that for, for approximately eighty years, there was a structure on that property.
Nineteen thirty-eight?
And, and there wasn't a problem with that being there from the city's perspective until now. And am I understanding that part?
I don't know what the city's position was in the past.
History of the city having a problem with the, with that structure?
I don't know one, and one hasn't, I have been made aware of one.
Of the city having a problem with it?
I have not been made aware of that.
Okay. Okay, so my, my concern is with that arbitrary and capricious phase, which I think is a really important one, and we, we don't want to be on the wrong side of that. Ever. So when I, when I hear this all laid out and an eight-decade record of a property being not an issue for the city, and then the city deciding that there is a use for that property, a very good public use for that property, I fully agree, to at that point say, this property can no longer change hands, this property needs to be, needs to be changed, that does sound, to me, arbitrary. That sounds like there was, there wasn't a problem for eight decades, and now we've decided that there is. And, and so my concern is the fact that a, a very good public use exists for the property has created a, a different way of dealing with the property than has always been in the history of the city. Effectively, not always, I mean, in eighteen ninety, they made it a, they made it a, a street. Totally recognize that. Do you understand my question?
I do.
I probably can't ask my question as well as I should.
No, I think I understand, and I'll try and answer, and if I haven't, somebody will let me know. So arbitrary and capricious is not the standard that counsel is using for a street vacation. But what that tells me is that you definitely see there is a public purpose in leaving this house there, you as a council member. And that's what count, that is counsel's right to decide. What is the public purpose? Should we allow this to continue being a, you know, a single-family home? Or do we not vacate it and someday we want to use this for the trail? That's up to you guys.
So, so I think, I think my concern is more about. property rights in general than it is about a specific residence that, that this, this is a property that has changed hands several times throughout the history of, of Snoqualmie.
Yes, I've seen that.
And, and those people ostensibly had property rights. Most of them changed the ownership of the property eventually. It went to a new owner. This current owner is not being allowed to do that. That's being, that's, that's a right that the previous property owners of that property have had or have at least exercised. And, and the city hasn't had an issue with that.
The city wouldn't have anything to say about these sales or the purchases in the past?
So.
They're not, you're not notified when that lot's sold or anything. You don't, can't say no, can't say yes.
Sure, sure. Um, uh, anyway, those, those are my concerns, and, and if you can speak to that, if there's anything that you haven't yet said.
In terms of property rights, NWBF does not have a right to have that house in Schusman. And that would be, we would go through each and every one of their arguments in a quiet title case that they say they're going to file. So I would not want to give the council legal advice tonight on each and every one of the arguments that we're going to make in that quiet, quiet title action, but we have gone through them and, and do believe that the cities has this public purpose and should not vacate Schusman. But I understand you're seeing another public purpose.
Well, my concern is that.
So, excuse me, so council, so it is now six fifty-two, we have gone past our, our ending time, and we're supposed to, I guess, meet again, is this on April twenty-eighth at six P M? And so if you want to write down your questions, Counselor Benson?
I don't think we gave this council as much time as we gave the other council.
We have not. We have four minutes, eighteen seconds left. So we will add that to that, plus the additional five minutes that they went, so. So we'll start there on April twenty-eighth at six P M. So with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Be moved by Counselor Benson, second by Counselor Washington. All in favor, say aye.
I, 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 can I just ask one question? Or, I, I just want to make sure, are we not supposed to discuss this until the twenty-eighth?
I'd recommend, let's just hold off any questions or.
So we are not to discuss this amongst ourselves between now and then?
I'd recommend not discussing it.
I just want to make sure that I.
Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any pos nay? And we are adjourned, and we will readjourn at seven o'clock for a council meeting, so, thank you. We just completed a roundtable, and now we are beginning our regular meeting of the City Council. The time is now seven P M, and let, let the record show that all council are present. Please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and Mayor Pro Tim Holloway, would you please lead the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So our first item of regular business is to approve the agenda. Council may have a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Second.
And moved by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway and second by Counselor Washington. Is there any discussion? Mayor Pro Tim Holloway?
I guess I've been informed that the, at least the first executive session that we have the agenda is no longer needed tonight, so I motion to remove that off the agenda. May I have a second?
Second.
Been moved by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway and second by Counselor Johnson to remove item number sixteen, which is the, the first executive session. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any pos nay? And that, that amendment passes. Any further discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye?
All in.
Any pos nay? And it is approved with, as amended. Thank you. So the next item is appointment to the Parks and Events Commission. So we have Renee Price has applied to fill a vacant position on the Parks and Events Commission. She has lived in the city for five years and has been an active mem- community member. She has experience in public governance, strategic planning, education, and community engagement. Move to confirm mayor's recommendation to appoint Renee Price to the Parks and Event, Parks and Events Commission, see thee.
So move.
Second.
Second.
So moved by Counselor Walton and second by Counselor Cotton. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any pos nay? Thank you. So we have appointed, we have Renee Price, who is here. We really appreciate your stepping up and volunteering for our community. So thank you. Next item is proclamation, Volunteer Appreciation Week. So volunteer appreciation is an opportunity for us to encourage all residents to recognize and extend appreciation to the volun- many volunteers who make Snoqualmie a special place. This year, the city's volunteer appreciation event will be held on Wednesday, April thirtieth at the Meadowbrook Interpretable Center. So council, we hope that you will join us in showing our appreciation for all the city's volunteers. So whereas the city of Snoqualmie encourages, supports, and facilitates volunteer participation in the delivery of city services, and whereas Snoqualmie's volunteers represent a diverse cross-section of our community, coming from all walks of life, working together to increase the quality of life within our community, and whereas volunteers have contributed hours in listening, planning, and analyzing and making decisions that benefit all residents, and whereas it is our opportunity to recognize the impact of volunteer service and the power of volunteers to tackle society's great challenges, to build stronger communities, and to be a force that transforms the world. And now therefore I, Catherine Ross, Mayor of the City of Snoqualmie, do hereby proclaim April twentieth to twenty twenty-six as Volunteer Appreciation Week. And the full proclamation is online if you want to finish reading it. But hopefully you will attend our volunteer appreciation, and we really appreciate all that, those that step up and volunteer on our commissions and boards and greet Snoqualmie and all of those. Thank you. Next item is Arbor Day. So Arbor Day is observed and celebrated throughout the United States and, and the course of the world to bring awareness of the benefits of trees in our communities. Snoqualmie's Arbor Day celebration will be April twenty-sixth from ten A M to two P M at Centennial Fields. So whereas Arbor Day was first observed one hundred and fifty years ago with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska in eighteen seventy-two, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the United States and the world, and whereas trees can combat climate change by reducing the erosion of our precious soil, topsoil by wind and water, cutting, heating, and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, producing light, living, life-giving oxygen, and providing habitat for wildlife. And whereas the city of Snoqualmie promotes the planting of trees on public and private lands, reforestation to open spaces, and other tree protection enhancements that help sustain the natural character of the Snoqualmie landscape. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas the presence of trees in our city directly improves human health and well-being. Now therefore I, Catherine Ross, Mayor of the City of Snoqualmie, do hereby proclaim April twenty-fifth as Arbor Day in the city of Snoqualmie, and encourage all residents to encourage all residents to join me in caring for trees of all shapes and sizes in our community. So hopefully we'll see a lot of you out at our Arbor Day on April twenty-fifth. Thank you. The next item.
Pardon me, Mayor?
Yes, Counselor Walton?
Is that April twenty-fifth or Saturday, April twenty-sixth?
Yes, I think the event's on the twenty-sixth, but Arbor Day is on the twenty-fifth.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for clarification. Next item is the State of the City video. And this, which I will introduce real quick. So this year, we're proud to present our State of the Cities video, which is an in-depth look at the important work being done by our council members, our board commissioners, city staff, and myself on behalf of the residents and businesses of Snoqualmie. In this video, each department will share highlights for their key accomplishments from twenty twenty-four as well as their goals and initiatives for twenty twenty-five. Each department will reflect on the changes they made or plan to make that deliver greater efficiencies and cost savings for our community. These improvements are doing, about doing better for everyone who lives and works in Snoqualmie. A special focus will be on how Munis, our new enterprise resource planning system, is transforming the way we operate. Departments will share how Munis is driving improvements internally, and more importantly, how those changes will result in more responsive, transparent, and cost-effective services for our community. You'll hear directly from every department about how their work today is building a stronger Snoqualmie for tomorrow. So we're sharing the video tonight with council, and then we will be sharing at the upcoming Snoqualmie Valley Chamber Luncheon. You will find this video on the city's YouTube channel, where viewers can choose to watch by department or watch, view the whole, the full video. So thanks to our staff who participated in the video, and special thanks to our communications group, Dana McCall, who directed and produced the video. So here we go.
Hello, I'm Catherine Ross, the Mayor of Snoqualmie. It is my honor to share with you the twenty twenty-five State of the City. We will reflect on the past year and reaffirm the commitment of our council members, board commissioners, city staff, and myself to this vibrant community and its future. We share a strong commitment to protecting, preserving, and enhancing Snoqualmie. These principles guide every decision we make on behalf of our residents and local businesses, and are the foundation for maintaining a high quality of life for everyone who calls their city home. Protecting Snoqualmie means safeguarding the well-being of our residents, ensuring public safety, access to services you rely on, and environmental preservation. Preserving Snoqualmie means honoring the city's unique character and rich history while maintaining the infrastructure that serves our community every day. Enhancing Snoqualmie means embracing progress and innovation, seeking greater efficiency, and fostering a community where every resident can thrive. As I present the State of the City alongside our leadership team, we'll highlight our progress, projects, initiatives we are working on, and our vision for the future of Snoqualmie. Each focused on protecting, preserving, and enhancing the high quality of life our residents enjoy and expect. But first, I'd like to start by introducing our Snoqualmie City Council. These elected officials work hard for you, making decisions about our city's future through research, community input, and careful discussion. Ethan Benson, Rob Walton, Brian Holloway, Louis Washington, Kat Cotton, Carrie Christensen, and Joe Johnson. Now I'd like to introduce Mike Chalmers, our city administrator. Mike, can you share some of the highlights from twenty twenty-four and what you are going to be working on this year?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor Ross. The Office of the City Administrator, which includes the Human Resources Department, facilitated change throughout the organization last year. We reorganized, hired, and trained new team members. We also improved service levels and lowered the cost of delivery them. We accomplished this by deploying new ideas and systems to improve our efficiency and accuracy. Like many organizations, we were not spared during the post-pandemic labor reshuffle. In early twenty twenty-two, approximately thirty percent of our positions were vacant. I am happy to report that our H R team did a fantastic job filling nearly every vacancy. This reshuffle created an opportunity to right-size parts of our organization, which we accomplished by being focused on delivering high-quality services more efficiently. We've also been focused on employee development, a priority of yours. We refined our performance review and training processes and created entry-level positions to expand employment opportunities and added development pathways to enhance employee retention. We are seeing results. Last year, we hired thirty-one new employees with eleven internal promotions, and at the beginning of twenty twenty-five, only six positions were vacant across the city. We also earned the Association of Washington City's twenty twenty-five Well City Award for the second year in a row. Snoqualmie is one of a hundred and twenty-three cities who earn this distinction, which recognizes organizations that achieve quality standards in employee health promotion and rewards cities with a two percent discount on medical premiums. We are all committed to creating a culture prioritizing the health of our employees. Probably our biggest change is our new business management software called Munis. When fully deployed, this new system improves efficiency and accuracy across all departments, leading to faster service delivery, better oversight, and cost savings for the taxpayers. During our most recent budget process, each department was tasked with carefully evaluating every expenditure with the new software. This approach has led to the creation of our most effective and efficient budget to date. Some other projects we've been working on are located right here at Snoqualmie Community Park. Behind me is our new splash pad, which will be ready for warmer weather fun starting this summer. With about one-third of our residents under the age of eighteen, this splash pad has been a community vision for about a decade. And seeing it come to life is a significant achievement. The splash pad's location was very intentional, as it's central to our highest concentration of youth residents. We're confident that families will enjoy this splash pad now and well into the future. We also are continuing to work on the community center expansion project, which will bring much-needed aquatic space as well as more health and wellness programming for all ages to the entire Snoqualmie Valley. Last year, we concluded the project's design a major milestone. We are actively pursuing state and county grants to close our funding gap and plan to put shovels in the ground as early as this year. We are confident having a fully designed, ready-to-go project will help secure the last bit of funding needed to make this exciting project a reality for our residents and to assure that every child in this area has the opportunity to learn to swim, making them safer in our local rivers, lakes, and swimming pools. At our recent council retreat, we had the exciting opportunity to meet with Burke Consulting to officially kick off our strategic plan. This marks the beginning of a new chapter for Snoqualmie with the creation of the first citywide strategic plan. We are looking forward to engaging with our residents, partners, and businesses to help shape the future. Together, we'll develop a vision and an actual plan to help guide us through the next five years and beyond.
Thank you, Mike, for that great overview. You guys are very busy this year. And now I'd like to introduce Finance Director Drew Bute. Drew, how is twenty twenty-four and what is on the horizon for twenty twenty-five?
Twenty twenty-four was an incredible year for the Finance Department. After a process that required tremendous facilitation, teamwork, hard questions, and even harder decisions, the City Council adopted a new biennial budget that aligns and balances key priorities like public safety, economic vibrancy, and preserving critical infrastructure with forecasted revenues. We continue to implement efficiencies and examine revenue-generating options to protect the city's financial sustainability. We're working on an updated fee and rate schedule to better align with service costs, and we're almost done with the year-long utility rate study, and are kickstarting a B N O tax audit and business license audit. Internally, the Finance Department partnered with H R and successfully rolled out a new payroll system, which reduces paper records, minimizes manual entry, and streamlines department processes. We also implemented two significantly changed collective bargaining agreements with the Teamsters and the police unions. These contracts provide competitive wages in exchange for more city-favorable overtime conditions in order to attract and retain employees while offsetting the cost of those wage increases. In fact, we've already seen a thirty percent decrease in overtime from our Teamsters' contract and expect even greater reductions in twenty twenty-five. And with the community's help, voters overwhelmingly approved a public safety sales tax levy, which will help preserve police and fire services. This year, we will take a critical step with the Munis system, with a focus on utility billing, project accounting, and contract management. The Finance Department is also making strides to improve equity between Snoqualmie taxpayers and the users of our public safety services by completing agreements with both the Snoqualmie Tribe and the city in a red bend.
One last question for you, Drew. Can you touch on any changes in your department that might benefit our residents?
The completion of our transition to Munis will benefit residents substantially through a more robust online presence and user experience, which will greatly improve our ability to process payments. Munis will also improve productivity, which will keep staffing costs stable despite growing complexity within government operations. This new system will also increase controls and oversight of the city's resources, improve access to financial information, and focus on customer service support.
Thank you, Drew, for that thorough update. And now I'm going to turn it over to our city attorney, Dina Burke, and our city clerk, Dina Dean, to share the important work that they do to keep everything running smoothly.
Thanks, Mayor Ross. I'm Dina Burke, and I am honored to serve as Snoqualmie City Attorney. The city attorney's office is the backstage crew, making sure the show runs smoothly. Every city project from twenty twenty-four had a lawyer behind the scenes, reviewing contracts, decoding fine print, and preventing costly uh-oh moments. If it involves money, land, or even a suspiciously placed comma, there's a lawyer fueled by. there's a lawyer fueled by caffeine and love for public service protecting the city. Our 2025 mission is building rock-solid processes to support all of the city's projects. With the establishment of an in-house city attorney, various legal projects that were once handled by outside counsel will be brought in-house. As city attorney in 2025, I will continue to provide ongoing legal support of all aspects of the city, including contracts and negotiations, to ensure the city runs smoothly and is the best it can be. Now I'll hand it off to Dina Dean, our city clerk, whose work is another integral part in ensuring things run smoothly and the city's history is preserved.
Thanks, Dina. The city clerk's office is the keeper of legislative records, the official custodian of city records, oversees public disclosure, manages the city's risk program, and many other things that keep things running smoothly. This is a big job that requires a lot of attention to detail, which we love. Last year, we improved and preserved record retention with our new content management software, which also enhanced the city's business processes and workflows. This new software allowed us to cancel our previous public record software, which resulted in an annual $20,000 savings. We also reduced costs by eliminating unnecessary storage space for paper documents that had met retention. This year, we'll keep up our momentum and continued workflow improvements, including designing automated processes for internal and external forms like special events permits and contract approvals. We will also continue to migrate electronic records into one location to preserve transparency and improve accessibility. We are committed to creating streamlined and efficient processes that are user-friendly for both staff and the public, saving taxpayer money, and pride ourselves on our quick response times for internal and external customers.
Now I'd like to welcome Snoqualmie Fire Chief Bailey and our deputy chief Brown. So I know that 2024 was a busy one. Can you please give us an overview of the fire department's accomplishments?
Thanks, Mayor Ross. And you're right, we were busy last year. In addition to responding to a record 1,715 calls for service and completing over 7,000 training hours, we retained our reaccredited status with the Commission on Fire Accreditation International for another five years. This was a big undertaking for us and required a thorough self-assessment process, which is how we identify and plan for our service improvements here in the department. As part of our reaccreditation, we completed a five-year strategic plan to guide the department and set metrics for our progress toward goals. Last but not least, we hired three new firefighters in 2024 to fill vacant positions, which helps reduce overtime and the stress it can place on our team.
Thank you, chief. And this year, can you fill us in on some of the things that your department's going to be working on in 2025?
Sure. Thanks to our new biennial budget, we're adding another three firefighters to our team in 2025, which will help with our increasing call volume and our goal to continue reducing overtime. When it comes to fire and aid, there are no service boundaries, so these additional firefighters will increase times that we have two units available to respond to calls inside and outside of our city limits. Two of our new firefighters started in January and another started this month. Emergency management training is a big focus this year. The city's Emergency Operations Center, or EOC, is located inside the fire station and functions as our central command station during emergency events. We recently updated our comprehensive emergency management plan and are now working to ensure all staff are fully trained if and when we open our EOC. We'll be conducting training exercises with partners like the city of North Bend, King County Search and Rescue, and our Community Emergency Response Team. In this biennial budget, the council also set aside money for the purchase of a used wildland brush truck and associated equipment to better prepare for the increasing wildland fire risk on this side of the Cascades. We also have a big milestone coming up, the 20th anniversary of the Snoqualmie Fire Station. Later this spring, we'll have an open house to celebrate, and we hope to have our new fire engine ready to unveil. This new engine was designed with a clean cap concept, which means equipment and gear can be stored in exterior compartments away from the firefighters to improve their health and safety.
We have Deputy Chief Brown here today, whom I'd like to formally introduce to our residents. He started with us last year and plays an important role in our department. Deputy Chief Brown, can you please provide an overview of our volunteer EMS program?
Thanks, Mayor Ross. We're lucky to have a very robust volunteer program in the Snoqualmie Fire Department. Right now, we have 12 EMS volunteers. By year-end, our goal is to increase that number to 20. We're one of the last departments in King County utilizing the valuable asset of volunteers who work regular duty shifts, assisting career firefighters on calls, and helping with hospital transports. You'll also see these team members spearheading community service initiatives that provide winter coats and food to those in need, and leading vital training classes that teach residents first aid, CPR, and how to reverse an opioid overdose. Our department and community are stronger thanks to these dedicated volunteers.
Well, now shift to our police department. I'd like to do another introduction. This is Captain Gary Horace, who started with us last year. Captain Horace, can you highlight 2024 accomplishments and share several goals and initiatives for this year?
Thanks, Mayor Ross. I'd be honored to highlight the great work of our department. Just like other departments, we were very busy last year. Staffing was a top priority. With the help of HR, we hit full staffing levels for patrol officers. One of last year's accomplishments I'm the proudest of was opening our new substation at the North Bend Allen Mall, which has increased officer visibility, improved response times, and helped decrease shoplifting incidents by 38% and burglaries by 26% in North Bend. In Snoqualmie, the overall crime rate declined 10% in 2024, helping maintain Snoqualmie's ranking as one of the top 10 safest cities in Washington, a ranking the city has held since 2018. This crime rate reduction is attributed to our continued hiring efforts, continued proactive police work, and changes to legislation which allowed us to pursue suspected criminals. 2025 looks to be a positive year with a full staff patrol division. Combined with our community-based policing model and proactive approach, we will help keep our community one of the safest in Washington State. As part of the department's accreditation efforts, last May, we hosted an onsite department review from the Washington Association of Sheriffs and Police Chiefs Loan Executive Management Assistance Program. This assessment report will guide us towards becoming an accredited police department and help ensure the department is in line with industry best practices and standards. This year, we focused on continued improvement, including remodeling a portion of the 25-year-old police station building. We are also working towards a new inter-local agreement with the city of North Bend for continued police services. We are making good progress toward an agreement that provides residents with the level of service we know they expect. Last but not least, we support our officers with continued education to help ensure they have the tools needed to serve our community.
Thank you, Captain, for that overview. Are there any department changes this year that will benefit our residents?
There are. Most notably, the new contract with the police union provided a new work schedule for patrol officers that significantly reduced overtime, which saves the taxpayers money and helps prevent burnout and stress that regular overtime can cause.
Thank you, Captain Horace, for that great overview. Our IT department might win the award for the unsung hero. This dedicated team is the backbone of support for our infrastructure and staff members who serve our residents. Fletcher LaCroix heads our IT department and can provide an overview of the work completed last year and work underway in 2025. Turn it over to Fletcher.
Thank you, Mayor Ross. I'm very proud of our department. We've spent 2024 improving processes to better support our staff so they can better support our community. This includes completing upgrades to the fire station phone system, installing a new AV system in council chambers, and a new citywide VPN. Our work continues in 2025 with our network optimization project, which will improve reliability, increase internet speeds, and protect secure connection. This year, we will also complete improvements to our network services, including upgrading the city's phone system to a cloud voice-over-IP, a more efficient system that will provide significant savings and give staff access to more flexible and reliable system. Our team sees a bright future in supporting the city's mission.
Thank you, Fletcher. Your team is making many positive changes. Now I'd like to introduce our interim community development director Mona Davis, who is also a Snoqualmie Valley resident, and she started with the city late last year. Mona, I know that your department accomplished a lot in 2024, and you have some exciting projects underway this year. Can you please provide an update?
I'd be happy to. A major department accomplishment last year was the council's adoption of our comprehensive plan, periodic update called Snoqualmie 2044, which will guide how we grow for the next 20 years. This extensive two-year project included a housing strategy plan to ensure our community can address our part of the state's housing shortage. Recently, the King County Growth Management Planning Council unanimously approved a request from the city of Snoqualmie to reduce its 20-year housing growth target from 1,500 to 719 units. The original growth target exceeded the city's actual land capacity as most of the land is already developed, environmentally constrained, or located within the floodplain. We successfully created a traffic impact fee program, which equips us to manage growth responsibly and assure developments pay for new traffic impacts while balancing community needs. We also conducted economic development roundtables with local business owners to hear directly from them on how best to retain and protect local businesses. Looking ahead in 2025, we will focus on projects and initiatives to enhance our city, like creating affordable and workforce housing, enhancing our flood resilience strategies, and addressing climate change by adding a new climate element to our comprehensive plan, which is driven by community input. In our commitment to improving service delivery, we are streamlining our permit processes through a digital public portal, making it easier for residents and businesses to engage with our department and find the information they need on our website. And in our commitment to economic vitality, we have some great projects on the horizon that will enhance and support tourism while also expanding services to residents. Last year, we identified a city-owned land parcel for a future affordable and workforce housing project and issued a request for qualifications from companies experienced with these types of project developments. Our goal is to expand affordable housing options for those who work in the Snoqualmie Valley and also want to call it home. The first new mixed-use project in downtown Snoqualmie in many years, which is called the Rails, is currently under construction. This project will bring 11 new apartments to the historic district, along with office space on the first floor. The Northwest Railway Museum continues working on its new roundhouse project, which will bring a working railway roundhouse to the museum's campus on Stone Quarry Road, which is anticipated to increase the already significant tourist draw of the Northwest Railway Museum and its scenic antique train excursions. There is also a model railroad museum planned in the historic downtown district at the corner of Railroad Avenue and King Street, which will showcase one of the largest and most detailed working model railroads in the United States, along with providing a community event space, a gift shop, and cultural, educational, and other interactive features. There is an exciting new project in the works from Snoqualmie Valley Health, which is proposing to construct a new building on land parcels adjacent to the current hospital. The facility would house imaging and surgery facilities, as well as space for retail pharmacy, physical therapy, and clinics. It will also support public retail uses like a restaurant, meeting rooms, and recreational amenities. To mitigate the project, the developer is proposing a new traffic light at the intersection of Southeast 99th and Snoqualmie Parkway to improve traffic flow in the area. And the final housing plat on Snoqualmie Ridge will start construction this year. The Timber Trails Project is located on Jacobia Street near Timber Ridge Elementary School and will bring nearly 50 new middle housing units, expanding housing options at different price points. The long-planned mill site project hopes to break ground in the next couple of years, revitalizing the former warehouse or lumber mill site into a thriving mixed-use retail and commercial development with a new housing, including 22% designated as affordable units. The project will focus on beer and wine production and include tasting rooms, restaurants, and retail.
So I'm now joined by our Parks and Public Works Director Jeff Hamlin to learn more about the important work that his department is doing. Jeff, can you give us an overview of the many things your department is responsible for?
Thanks, Mayor Ross. I'd be happy to. The Parks and Public Works Department plays a critical role each day to ensure the infrastructure we all rely on is both functional and protected. Our 40 employees, organized into six divisions, maintain your parks, streets, trails, sidewalks, water, wastewater, and stormwater systems, our large urban forest, the city's capital improvement program and our projects, as well as all city vehicles and equipment. We are committed to finding new efficiencies. In fact, last year, we began new irrigation practices that conserved over 10 million gallons of irrigation water. That was a reduction of nearly 40%. We wear a lot of hats in Parks and Public Works. We cover a broad range of infrastructure necessities, protecting our surrounding environment, making sure you get to where you need to go, and preserving your high quality of life.
I know that you've got some projects underway this year. Can you tell us what your team is working on and how our Munis software benefits the department?
Sure. I'll start with Munis, which is creating significant efficiencies for us. In addition to streamlining employee time management, crews can now track completed projects in real time while they're in the field, reducing our reliance on paper records. Our newly-deployed asset management software improves our ability to track this completed work and develop maintenance histories for our infrastructure. Our five-year goal is to deploy predictive maintenance histories, which will reduce the frequency of costly breakdowns and minimize costs to residents. As for projects, we're ahead of schedule, on budget, and wrapping up a major improvement at our water reclamation facility. This project will support the Snoqualmie Tribe's hotel and casino expansion, as well as increase and improve the facility's overall capacity. The tribe has made a major investment in this project, and we're excited about the positive impact it will have. Additionally, we have several exciting transportation, parks, and open space projects happening that I will let our team members share more details with you.
Hi, I'm Phil Bennett, Parks and Politeworks Deputy Director. Our team is doing some great work to maintain, preserve, and improve the infrastructure that makes Snoqualmie an incredible place to live. Our work is driven by our capital improvement plan, which incorporates council's goals and priorities, including preserving neighborhood livability by supporting transportation and park improvements. Late last year, ahead of schedule and under budget, we finished the Kimball Creek Bridges Restoration Project. We thank you for your patience during the extended closure of Meadow Brook Way, which was necessary to restore the bridges to support this section of roadway. We were recognized again this year as 2025 Tree City USA by the Arbor Day Foundation for the city's commitment to effective urban forest management. This year, we're continuing a street tree project that is bringing 300 new trees to public property in downtown Snoqualmie. The project ensures that all residents have equitable access to the benefits that trees provide, including stormwater management, improved air quality, pavement preservation, and shade in the summer. Our playground replacement program will bring new equipment to Cottonwood and Cascade Parks during the next two years. And our Greens Snoqualmie partnership continues its efforts to enhance our urban forest, one of the largest in King County, by utilizing environmental partnerships and the power of volunteers to remove invasive plant species and plant climate-resilient trees so our forests can thrive.
Hi, I'm Capital Improvement Program Manager Dylan Gamble. Our six-year capital improvement plan identifies and funds improvement projects across the city, including maintaining and improving existing buildings, streets, sidewalks, parks, and investing in new projects to enhance and preserve Snoqualmie's high quality of life. One project moving forward is the River Trail Project, which we've been planning for the past decade. This year, we plan to begin installation of a portion of the trail between Kimball Creek and Northern Street. The project creates soft-surface trails and boardwalks, better connecting residents, visitors, to the river and natural spaces in the downtown area. Eventually, this trail will connect to Sandy Cove Park in the historic downtown. We're also preparing to move forward with Phase Two of the Sandy Cove Bank Stabilization Project, which will bring permanent stabilization to this section of the riverbank. The project will restore the riverbank to the 2019 levels before significant erosion had begun threatening Sandy Cove Park and the downtown infrastructure. When finished, this project will prevent future riverbank erosion and keep the Snoqualmie River in a safer channelization pathway.
Hi, I'm Pat Fry, project engineer here at the city. Last year, our 384th sidewalk and sewer project replaced the 40-year-old sewer line that served this area of downtown Snoqualmie. The new line, which serves about 75 homes, is now adequately sized and properly graded to serve the Snoqualmie Casino Hotel Expansion. We also added sewer line stubouts, so homes on this portion of 384th, which are currently on septic, can more easily connect to city sewer in the future. The project also added a new sidewalk that runs from the Encompass Campus to Newton Street. We know a lot of residents living in this area regularly walk 384th to access downtown Snoqualmie. This sidewalk enhances pedestrian safety. This spring, we will complete the project when this stretch of roadway gets repaved. This project improves and protects both our wastewater system and public safety. Approximately $500,000 of project funding came from a state grant, which reduces the financial impact on Snoqualmie taxpayers.
Hi, I'm Public Works Project Engineer Andrew Vining. Right now, I'm overseeing an important project that will improve our reclaimed water distribution system. Reclaimed water is wastewater that gets treated to such a high level that it can be used safely for irrigation. You may see purple pipes and signs at city parks, streetscapes, or commercial businesses, which indicate that reclaimed water is being used in place of drinking water at the site. To meet new state requirements and continue conservation of drinking water, the city is building a new building a new reservoir and pump station located here along Ridge Street near Eagle Lake Drive. These improvements are funded by a low-interest loan from the Department of Ecology and are expected to be completed in summer of 2026.
And now, I'd like to move on to another investment the city makes to preserve your quality of life: communications and events. Our communications department, consisting of Dana McCall and Nicole Weeby, is dedicated to connecting and communicating with residents. Dana, can you give me an overview of what your team is working on?
My pleasure, Mayor Ross. As communications coordinator, I'm always looking for ways to optimize how we connect with residents, make it easier for you to find what you need on our website, as well as building trust through transparent communication. We continue to focus on growing our social media platforms, adding 1,500 new Facebook and Instagram followers this past year. We also launched a tourism website and encourage you to stop by Visit Snoqualmie to discover your hometown. Later this year, in our commitment to improvement, we'll be conducting our biennial community survey, asking you how you think we're doing, so we can gauge the services we provide. We're also in the planning stages for a new community podcast and preparing to relaunch our Citizens Academy, this time in a hybrid format. We recently restructured the communications department, bringing in community liaison Nicole Weeby. Together, Nicole and I are supporting every city department, our business community, and working to grow tourism through marketing initiatives and utilizing the reach of social media. Nicole is also planning some great events this year, starting with our iconic egg hunts. Big Truck Day returns in June, then Music and Movies in the Park launches in July. Nicole also tells me winter lights will be bigger and brighter than ever this year. And watch for some amazing city-sponsored community events like Red, White &amp; Boom and the International Block Party. By collaborating with our community partners, we are bringing even more events to our residents.
Thanks, Dana. As your mayor, it is both an honor and a privilege to guide Snoqualmie forward, always with a focus on protecting, preserving, and enhancing our community. Over the past year, we have made significant progress in our creating momentum that will continue through 2025. We are making meaningful and measurable progress, from revitalized infrastructure to strengthened public safety departments, advanced affordable housing solutions, and delivered innovative systems that ensure city services are more transparent, more responsive, and more efficient. These improvements aren't just about modernization, they're about real benefits for our residents, including taxpayer savings, improved access, and better outcomes across the board. We will continue to focus on enhancing the livability and quality of life in our community, ensuring safety, maintaining fiscal stability, and encouraging economic vitality. Thank you to the entire team at the city of Snoqualmie for your passion, creativity, and commitment to public service. And thank you to our residents and businesses for your trust and partnership. Together, we are protecting what makes Snoqualmie special, preserving our identity and values, and enhancing the city for generations to come. I hope that the state of the city has given you a deeper understanding of the work being done on your behalf and the bright future we are building together. Thank you.
Corrected, though. Who's the director?
Dana McCall. Fantastic job. And everyone wrote their own scripts. So, nice job from the staff. It shows lots of different things that they're working on and all their hard work, so, thanks. Great. Now we move on to public comment. At this time, we'll provide time for residents to comment on items not on the agenda. No online public comments will be accepted during the meeting. Written comments are encouraged and may be submitted in person, mail, or email to cityclerk@snqualmiewa.gov. So is there anyone in the audience that would like to do public comment? If so, please raise your hand. Seeing none, then our public comment is closed, and we will move on to the consent agenda, which contains approve the city council meeting minutes dated March 18th, 2025, March 24th, 2025, March 28th, 2025, and April 7th, 2025, and approve the claims report dated April 14th, 2025. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Washington and second by Mayor Protim Holloway. Is there any public comment regarding any of those items on this consent agenda? Seeing none, is there any discussion? Moving on to approval, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? And it is unanimous, and the consent agenda is approved. Moving on to ordinances. Next is AB 25-003, Amending Utility Rates for Years 2025 to 2030. This is the second reading of Ordinance 1303. Councilor Benson, would you please read the introduction and motion?
All right. Ordinance 1303 will amend the utility rates for the years of 2025 to 2030. The recommended rate changes are designed to match rate revenue requirements, cost of service balances, and rate design for the city's combined utility. The recommended rate changes are based on the 2025-2030 Utility Rate Study conducted by FCS Group. This is the second reading of Ordinance 1303. Move to approve Ordinance 1303, amending city of Snoqualmie's utility rates for the years 2025 to 2030.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Benson and second by Mayor Protim Holloway. Is there any public comment regarding this item? Seeing none. Council, is there any further discussion on this? Councilor Cotton?
Excuse me, just a comment of how much time and effort has gone into this by the other departments and the council and administration. I know we've gone back to the drawing board several times in committee and with council, and hoping to find an equitable balance for everybody, and so hopefully it's not too bitter a pill to swallow for those that are affected by it.
Thank you. Councilor Johnson?
Yeah, two things. One is, I thought that I'd heard that the bid for the reclamation facility was going to come in north of what we were originally expecting, and I was wondering if that was true. First and second, if that had any impact on the rates as calculated.
We have Dylan Gamble, CIP manager.
Yes. So, as for the... So yes, the price came in different than the engineer's estimate, and we will go into further details of that. That is one of the agenda bills later tonight. We should note that just the agenda bill itself, there's more to it. There's other work that will be done in addition to the agenda bill. So, the exact number, I don't have right at this moment, but I could say that yes, it will be different than what we anticipated, and it's higher. As for the second part, as the rates are calculated based on our anticipated revenue needs, so what we're trying to do with the rates is anticipate our costs going forward for the next six years and a bit beyond. Those next six years, we try to guesstimate how much money we're going to need to achieve all of our projects and all of our staffing, things of that nature. And then we try to calculate what the rates ought to be to cover what we anticipate that to be. Now, we're moving with two different directions of anticipation here, and essentially what happens is we've tried to generate the amount of revenue to meet the need. If we go under and over on projects, as expenses come in true, either true to cost or above or below, we adapt, and as it gets tighter, we adapt harder. If we have, obviously, if we collect more revenue than we anticipate, then we would come to council with a discussion about why we have exceeding amounts of revenue and we've overburdened our citizenry. So in a sense, this is just going to put pressure on a limited resource. Anytime we go over our budgets on any specific project, we further increase that tightness. When we go under, we alleviate it to some extent. And again, if something happens in the greater world, then it impacts how people are paying rates, or if we see a large reduction in the amount of people paying rates, or something funny like that, we would also see a consequence to how much revenue we're going to generate from that as well. There's probably more to that, and there's a lot more nuance into it, but that's the kind of gist of the impacts.
So we have Councilor Walton.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate all the work that has been put into this. I am not convinced that... And while we've made progress, I'm not convinced that the rates that we are set to approve are as fair as they could be, or as considered for outside of residential. I would like to have seen more information around commercial. I would have liked to have seen more information around multifamily in the justifications, and I've said this before, and for that reason, I am voting against this rate change.
Councilor Johnson?
Yeah, so just a short version was that the impact is not expected to be significant enough to factor in at this point, that we could bring in something later on if it turns out that it is having an impact somehow, but it doesn't seem like it's enough. It's going to be like somewhere over in the margins in the sixth decimal place, or something.
Not that far. Not that many decimals. Yeah. Way closer to the real numbers territory, but yes, we will need to... There's so many projects that are going on that could come in and under cost, and so we'd want to wait till we get closer to address any sort of like more serious solutions. The second part of it, that we always calculate reserve for the kind of anomalous situations that happen, to kind of cover this, smooth out those rough edges in the collection of revenue and the expenditures of it. And the last one is that finance does a very thorough job calculating our cash flows to make sure that we're not about to cross that line, where our revenues are not keeping up with our sudden expenditures. There's a lot to do with all that calculations, and so they do a pretty thorough job of it, and that will keep us out of that kind of getting ourselves into a problem later just because of one project going on, over/under.
Mayor Protim Holloway?
So I've expressed my concern and committing all the pressure here. As these projects come in and they are over our anticipated budget, I am looking for the analysis of how we are adjusting, what comes off the table to put this on the table. I do not want to back into a rate increase because we didn't do that upfront, and we want to do it at the tail end. This particular project's close to half a million dollars, going over budget. It's not something I'm going to be laissez-faire about, hey? I need to have that conversation of how are we fitting this on the plate, because I don't want to change these rates. We've already had significant work and significant community feedback to get these rates where they are now. So I'm just going to voice my opinion at this stage, and I'll voice it again later on in the agenda.
Councilor Johnson?
So that does kind of lead into my bigger concern, and that is the rate study itself. There should be a document that looks something like this, that is the study. This is the police thing, but it should be a document, right, that we have in hand, in a PDF that I can look at, and we do the study so that we know what it is that we're voting on. It's like if you do a traffic study, you don't vote to put in a light before you have the study done. So I am very uncomfortable voting for something if we don't have the actual study itself. And so my next question is, at what point can we expect to get the study?
Yes. The study would come right after we complete the GFC ordinance, so just like we went through this rate study ordinance, there's a GFC's package component to it that we disconnected from this portion for time reasons. Once we've completed the GFCs, we'll package that up into a rate study binder. It will look just like that one. And that...
Just a document.
It's going to look just like that. And it will compile all the rationales and the decision-making and the choices that got us there. What FCS Group does, and what most cities do to kind of get to this point, is we workshop all the details so that they can package it together to then showcase what choices were made along the way. So if we were to go the route of a study now, ahead of the ordinance, like we would have back in January, when the ordinance was not passed, we would be redoing our study, because we would be fundamentally changing a lot of the assumptions that went into it. And rather than having FCS do a new study documentation and all that, instead, we went through the workshopping details again. In a sense, it's possible to do it the way you're describing. It would probably take a lot longer, it would be less flexible, and it would require a lot more meetings, which all these things relate to money usually, and in this case would almost certainly.
On what?
So, why do we need the GFC part first? Is that going to change the rates that we are supposed to be voting on? This is supposed to be a rate study, if I'm not mistaken. So we're supposed to be figuring out how much the rates are supposed to be that we're supposed to be voting on. So is that part of the study, the GFC is going to change these numbers that we're supposed to be voting on?
The GFC part is already assumed in the rates. It's just a matter of calculating the proper cost to each capital project. I'm kind of blending the world here. I think the short answer to your question is, is that we have a rate study document, which is essentially a scope of work that we've asked FCS to group to do, to produce for us, that includes both GFC calculations, there's other acronyms in there, and the rates that are required for the revenue to be met, and we'll package those together. That's the document we requested from them in this scope work. We could go after a different scope of work and change it. The one that we requested from them is the one we went down.
Could it be that we get something that justifies these rates specifically?
The... Right now, the justification is the scope of meetings, the presentations as a whole, the decisions the council has made that we have requested like discussion or direction on, a compilation of those motions essentially. And that is the justification for the existing ordinance and the rates as we have them.
Any other questions? Councilor Washington?
So when will it be completed? Like, by what date?
I don't know exactly. I don't know how council will work through the GFC discussion. I'd like it to be done in the summer. Things can take longer, depends on the complexity, and depends on the choices we make to kind of get there, but I'd like it to be done... It shouldn't take as long as the utility rate study, the work that we've done so far has. The GFCs are more of a baked-in product, so to speak, less variables.
So has FCS started the GFC process?
Yes.
They have.
To get to this point with our rates, we would have had to... We've already done a bunch of the GFC decision-making, or data collection, and things of that nature. We just have been waiting until this is complete, and then we'll bring the GFCs to follow it.
Mayor Protim Holloway?
So if... And I participated in the long story to get here. I understand your statement there, but what would it take to get at least an interim rate study minus the GFCs to attach to this agenda bill?
I don't know. I don't know. I'd have to...
Estimate, I mean, are we talking weeks, months, years?
It would take weeks, and then it depends... I don't know what it would do in terms of the consequences to the ordinance as its timing and things like that, but it would take weeks. They'd have to produce a, you know, multi-page document. If you... What I want to do is make sure that whatever we produce achieves the goals that you have in mind for a document like this, so it would take time to produce one in that thoroughness. I don't want FCS to just write us a letter saying, "We met them at all these times, we made these calls, and this is what they said." I'd want it to be more thorough.
No, but they're on contract to report a rate study to generate a rate study report, including these rates and GFCs. They've done the work, a little more to go on GFCs, so cannot that portion of the report be generated covering just the rates minus GFC?
I believe so. Yes, I mean, it can. Of course, their scope of work covers this. We can have them produce it. How quickly they produce it, I don't know exactly. I need to go ask them. And then the other detail that I would just want to bring to context here is we have gotten... We have exceeded our meeting allowance for the contract, and we're already getting pretty thin on the amount of time, or I'm sorry, the budget we have remaining for the contract, and we'll probably need to consider what other choices we... Either do a contract amendment. I know that finance has been in discussions with me to see if FCS can add certain scope details, which would change the contract a bit, not to belabor something that's kind of tangential, but we have some scope changes that would be needed probably to achieve more work. This would probably represent more work, switching their timing.
Councilor Johnson?
It sounds like that's kind of what we have in front of us, though, is here's a list of meetings that's kind of on a website that I really appreciate. I'm so glad that it's there. Thank you for that. It does at least kind of compile it, but it is essentially like a memo of, here's the meetings, and here's what we talked about. And I just am not convinced that that is what we need to make a responsible decision, that our residents can feel confident that they can go and look at what we looked at and come to similar conclusions, and it just isn't in that nice package. And, uh, it just isn't in that nice package that I would expect from a study that I could use to justify my vote. And, uh, had something else, but it'll come back to me.
Councilor Benson?
I think, I think what Councilman Johnson is saying is, um, this is my first rate study, so I don't fully understand how to go about one. And I think that's one of the reasons that we exceeded our meeting allotment with FCS is that, uh, in the process of doing this, we were sort of proposed several options that, that were reasonable options for ways to go on the rate study. And throughout that process, we kind of focused on one of those options. And then after focusing on one of those options and proposing that, got public feedback saying, "This is a crazy stupid option for, for us," you know, the, the particular people who, who responded. And so we had to re, uh, relook at it. We had to look at it again and say, "How do we, how do we make this work for, for everyone?" Um, and, uh, for a council that isn't all Brian Holloway, um, we don't have the, the experience necessary to, to know exactly where we're going in a rate study. And some sort of focusing document that help, could help us to, to see the scope of it all at once and, and, and understand it and, uh, and all of the options and the levers that are pulled in order to make the, the rates work, uh, would be, would be helpful. Uh, that, you know, it'd be useful training wheels for, for somebody doing it for the first time, I think. And, uh, that's what I'm hearing from Councilman Johnson, but really what I'm probably hearing is just what I need. Um, and he has, uh, you know, grown-up reasons for what he's saying. Um, but, uh, but I think it's, I think it's a useful, I think it would be a useful tool for council to have a better understanding of the process of, you know, what we're doing when we're determining the rates.
I'm happy to go to FCS and request scope changes, amendments to scope changes, changes to the workload, the needed things. What the process unraveled for us was a, we did a, uh, an RFP or an RFQ, I can't recall right now, selected a consultant, gave them the scope of work, brought that scope of work and contracted council and then went to task at trying to achieve it, trying to match, uh, as closely as possible with the previous rate studies that we've done in the past with FCS group. So this is a reflection of that process. Uh, I did not anticipate needing to do it in a different order than we did previously and that's why the scope of work was kind of laid out the way it was, but we can always make changes. I'm happy to negotiate with them and bring back whatever is needed there.
Councilor Johnson?
So I guess I will go back and look at, uh, past councils, but, um, what past council members have told me is that they had a rate study in hand before the vote, that that was the order.
That is a true statement.
And that the order for doing these kinds of things is you get the study first, like the example I gave of a cha- traffic signal. You don't approve the light before they've proven that you actually need to have a light there. So anyway, that's, um, that's that. And then one other thing is just this, this notion that we're kind of like up against some sort of a time clock, so we gotta go and vote. Uh, that doesn't fly for me. If we need more time, then we need more time, uh, and that's just the way it's gonna be.
So where's the rest of council stand? I mean, we have all the information. We know how we got to this point after many sessions, starting last August or September. So we know how we worked through it. I think everyone's done a really thorough job in reviewing, reviewing, reviewing the projects, reviewing the, the rates and pushing projects out so we can have lower rates and looking at debt, all of that. So you, you kinda, you have that information. So where's the rest of you stand on holding off on this? Requesting a, a change in scope of work? Having the, having this come, the reports come out in probably more than several weeks? And then you also have to need to start working on GFCs. And so the further you push it out also is, um, the further impact on the revenues for utilities. So I'd like to hear from other council members. Councilor Cotton?
I, I definitely had the advantage of being on the Parks and Public Works Committee, so did get to work through all these things. And, you know, we made multiple decisions, brought things to council, brought things back when, you know, council wasn't, you know, uh, didn't have enough information, brought things forward. I do feel comfortable with going forward with this at this point in time, but I don't know if that's because I was involved with all of these, uh, meetings going on. So I don't think any, um, you know, reports that might be published are, are gonna affect, uh, my decision on this.
Councilor Christensen, did you have?
I am still considering, thank you.
Yeah, so I'll just make a statement. Um, I understand it's been vetted out at the committee level. We've gone back and forth at the council level, but the Councilmember Johnson's point, I mean, you know, there, um, are some double-digit increases here for our residents in this rate study. I think it's due diligence to, to have the rate study before we vote on it.
Any other comments? Councilor Cotton?
I realize that this would potentially, um, have to renegotiate the FCS contract or the scope of work, which will certainly involve more costs involved in that again.
I'm gonna work with FCS to see what I can do. I, they, they have a certain amount of time associated with the project and we've spent time. They are excellent to work with in this regard for trying to work out details like this. And so really, I'm just gonna try to cajole them, bargain, uh, sweet talk, send chocolates and things like that to try to make sure we can get the best deal we can to, uh, achieve the objectives that you all tasked us to do. So that's how I'll approach it.
I know they have, uh, definitely, you know, done their presentations at council several times, that they've gone back through the whole history of the meetings and recapped it every single time. Now granted, it's not a written document that, you know, you can look at in front of you, but it certainly is available in PowerPoint as well as the YouTube meetings for, that were previously, uh, done as far as that goes. I don't know if that is helpful, but we have reviewed all of these things again from, from the beginning on through at, at every presentation that, um, FCS has brought forward to both the committee and to council.
Councilor Christensen?
I'm hearing enough hesitation amongst my fellow council members that I would prefer to see it back with a written document or report of some, some sort of review before we go on it. There's a significant amount of hesitation here and I wouldn't wanna rush anything as important as this.
Thank you. Rep. Tim Hawley?
So I'm, uh, again, we went through the right conversations. I'm comfortable where we came out to tonight through those conversations. However, I, I do appreciate the idea of summing that all up, at least into an interim report of rates minus GFCs that says, "What we've all done results in this." And here's at least the interim portion of that report that is part of the public record on this agenda bill and is there for historical purposes of what did they approve? Okay? Having said that, I, I motion to table until such times we can get that interim report attached to the agenda bill.
Second, second.
There's a motion to table the utility rate ordinance until the FCS report is available by Mayor Pro Tim Hawley and second by
Until an interim report is available. I don't, I'm not viewing this as a change of scope. It's more of a phasing of the report they were already contracted to do.
I understand. Until interim report is available. So it's Mayor Pro Tim Hawley and then second by Councilor Johnson. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
So we have six ayes and, um, one nay by Councilor Cotton, so, right?
Am I allowed to ask follow-up at this point?
Absolutely.
Okay, for clarification on my part. Um, first, uh, do we need to reperform the public hearing component of this if any details change?
I think if details, depends on what's changed.
Okay, okay. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
No changes, consolidate the report.
Yep, yes.
To what we're doing today.
And second, does the report need to be approved by council? Or is it, cause you, you stated it as bring you a report. I just wanna make sure. You mean approved and accepted as official city position?
I, I think we can do that as part of the agenda bill.
Okay.
All right, let's not do a separate action on an interim report.
Okay.
Councilor Johnson?
Uh, my thought would be that, uh, these are professionals that we have contracted with who can deliver their expertise and, um, well, I suppose that in terms of approving as council, I, I think we'd be doing that by the ordinance, agreeing with the conclusions of it, but, um, I don't think that we should be going in and saying, "No, that pipe really shouldn't be that big," you know? That seems outside of my knowledge base, so.
Okay.
I don't know if that made sense for what I'm saying, but yeah.
I think I get the intent. I just wanted to bring back
Yeah.
what I brought back in the right way.
Thank you.
Is this gonna break your chocolate budget?
We already broke the chocolate budget. No, um, well, I will get going on this and we'll see what, yeah, I'll be bringing back anything that I need to if the further information comes from FCS that necessitates me coming back.
Great, so it is tabled for now? And no further discussion? Okay, moving on to the next item. Is there, so is there any report for Public Safety Committee?
No report.
Next item under Community Development is AB 25-051, Hellstone Trust Property Acquisition. Councilor Washington, would you please read the introduction and motion?
Parcel identification number 7849200455, addressed at 7802 Railroad Avenue Southeast, Snoqualmie, Washington 98065, is identified on the Riverwalk Acquisition Status Map. As a remaining potential waterfront acquisition parcel, the city continues to assemble, uh, properties to construct a formalized, non-motorized trail that follows the edge of the Snoqualmie River through the downtown historic business district. The property, uh, the property owner of the parcel number previously mentioned above would like to facilitate a voluntary purchase and sell agreement to sell the property to the city. Down here. Motion, move to adopt Resolution 1712, approving a purchase and sell agreement for parcel, partial, parcel number mentioned above and authorizing the mayor to sign.
Second?
Been moved by Councilor Washington and second by Councilor Cotton. So first of all, is there any public comment regarding this item? Seeing none? Councilor Washington?
Yeah, just real quickly, so I left this item off consent, um, just in case there was any additional discussion, uh, you know, mainly because it is a potential, um, property, property acquisition. You'll see the sales price there, uh, potentially sales price of 360,000. Uh, my understanding is that is coming from, that is being funded by grant sources and there's unanimous support for this from the, uh, CD Committee.
Any discussion? Thanks for the overview. Mayor Pro Tim Hawley?
I'm just, um, nitpicking. Budget summary says nothing about this being grant-funded. Okay, it's just, it'd be a lot easier if you, you got my vote when I'm spending somebody else's money, make it blatant for me, all right?
Probably have the finance team respond.
Budget Manager, Jenna Walker?
Good evening, council. You're right, I only addressed the appropriation, which is the legal authority to spend. There is also a corollary, which is the fund balance. And because there's grant money, money coming in to match the expenditure going out, the fund balance would not be affected. And I take your advice, um, to heart and I will, I'll make a point to do that.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Council, Councilor Cotton?
I did have a question as to, uh, as we've learned from previous experiences with purchasing some of the homes in that area, is the, um, the eco-testing, uh, um, that we will probably be doing on this, uh, home, uh, going to be included in the, the price or is that an additional cost to the city besides the purchase price and also the demolition cost?
We do have interim city, community development. Mona Davis?
Thank you, mayor. Good evening, council. Um, yet those will be separate costs that are also covered through CFT tax funding and we're, that will all be covered. The, the demolition costs, the asbestos testing, any environmental testing, that's done at a later time after the acquisition and, but it, it is all covered by the grant funding. I did verify that.
Okay, all right, thanks, thanks. Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Thank you, and it's unanimous, AB 25-051, Hellstone Trust Property Acquisition is approved. Is there any further report from Community Development Committee?
Not at this time, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Next item, Parks and Public Works Committee, AB 25-048, awarding the reclaimed water distribution system improvements. Councilor Benson, would you please read the introduction and motion?
This agenda bill seeks to adopt Resolution 1713, awarding reclaimed water distribution system improvements, construction contract to Prospect Construction Incorporated. This project is funded through a low-interest loan received from the Department of Ecology Clean Water State Recovering, Revolving Fund. The improvements will upgrade the aging reclaimed water distribution system and bring it into compliance with current state standards. Uh, move to approve Resolution 1713, awarding the reclaimed water distribution system improvements to Prospect Construction Incorporated and authorize the mayor to sign.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved by Councilor Benson and second by Councilor Washington. Um, is there any public comment regarding this item? Seeing none? Um, we do have our Parks and Public Works Director, Jeff Hamlin.
Good evening, council. So unfortunately Andrew's not here tonight. He's on vacation, a well-earned vacation. So you have, uh, me filling in and I am on a bit of a vacation hangover myself, so I'm kind of catching up on this, but I've been involved with through this the entire time and, and Andrew did leave me good notes. So I wanted to, uh, I guess give a brief recap on this. Uh, this agenda bill seeks award of a construction contract for the reclaimed water distribution system improvements to Prospect Construction, who is our low bidder. This project will upgrade the reclaimed distribution system to current state standards to provide continued use of reclaimed water and conservation of potable water. City received bids from three separate contractors. Evaluation of the bids showed that the winning bidder, uh, was competitively priced. Uh, between all three contractors, uh, Prospect Construction was the low bidder at 7,178,000, oh, I'm sorry, 7,178,870, including tax, which is 3% below the engineer's estimate and 7% below the average bid. The, the letter recommending award is provided as Exhibit 4 to the agenda bill and includes determination that Prospect Construction and its subcontractors provided a complete bid and are qualified to complete the project. I'll say that, uh, uh, Prospect Construction was also the contractor for Phase 3 and Phase 2 of the wastewater treatment facility. And, uh, this team is the same team, uh, RH2 is the, the engineer and Prospect is the contractor, both very successful projects. While the construction costs are competitive, this contract resulted in a project budget shortfall of 427,990, uh, 198 dollars plus an plus an anticipated cost for construction management. This budget shortfall relates to increased construction costs as a result of recent economic uncertainty on project materials such as metals and electrical equipment. As well as costs of improved, uh, so, uh, improvements associated with tank access and maintenance, not included at the time of the budget estimating last summer. The budget shortfall will be somewhat mitigated by the eight point six million dollar ecology loan. And the city has requested increasing this loan amount of, uh, to five hundred thousand dollars in response to the increased construction cost. This project is currently on schedule to meet the state permit deadline of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. And administration recommends award of the construction contract Prospect Construction.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Council Johnson?
Uh, yeah, um, I mean, we kind of gotta do this, Ned Lowbitter, so, don't have a problem there. Uh, my question has to do with, uh, some of the, the terms are used for the technicalities of what we are doing as a council. So, um, it says that the appropriation requested, in my understanding of what this actually does, this exact action is an appropriation of five hundred twenty-nine dollars and, uh, five hundred twenty-nine thousand dollars and some odd change, um, for this exact contract. It seemed like, uh, the number that was needed in excess of what we have on hand was four hundred and twenty-seven thousand some odd. Um, so I was wondering why the difference, is that difference just, uh, in case of overages, or was there something else, and then I do have a different follow-up? But let's just cover that first.
I'm not sure I know the answer to that, I think that, uh,
Sorry, my computer's being really slow on scrolling.
Well, isn't that, isn't that covered in the financial impact, particularly the screenshot? And that will show you, it's four twenty-seven, over.
It's four twenty-seven over, and the appropriation is, that's being requested is around five thirty. I was just curious why those two numbers were different.
Don't know the answer, I'm wondering if, uh, maybe our
So Jana's gonna have to speak to that. Away.
Popped out.
Just before we go into that a little bit, um, the reason why we're having discussions back there for the most part is because it's important to understand that uh, with the tabling of the revenue or the utility rate study, for example, that does have potentially an impact, right, on projects. Projects specifically that may rely upon that funding from the rates, uh, to support the expenses that will come in the future as well as associated with this. I will just remind council that council has approved a loan, um, associated with this project. Uh, we will not be seeking reimbursement until we actually start spending money, uh, for the most part. So there is potentially some room here, but we do want at least confirmation potentially from council, not this week, maybe in a couple of weeks, for example, that they will be approving that rate study. Because this project is really dependent on, uh, obtaining those revenues to support the debt service coverage, um, that goes into this project. So I just want to be mindful of that, with that segue, I guess I'll turn it over to Jana.
Sorry for that, we were discussing the implications and impacts, um, on this particular product, project and others, and I missed your question, would you ask it again, please?
Okay, so I thought that what I read, uh, from the appropriation was that it's somewhere around five hundred and thirty thousand, that that is the actual action we are taking is appropriating those funds for this contract. But, uh, that the overage was only four hundred and twenty-seven thousand-ish, and I was wondering why those two numbers are different.
So we are, the value of the contract is seven point two million that we're approving today? Sorry, I still don't think I'm quite following.
Okay, I'm sorry, mayor, there's actually something else that's related to this. So this actually dovetails to my second point then, so I might as well bring it up, and that is, I thought that we hadn't yet appropriated anything for this. So I thought the appropriation should be seven, uh, million, one hundred and seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars. That we would not be appropriating five hundred twenty-nine thousand and six dollars. So, those are, I guess, kind of two questions that are now interwoven together.
Well, and that's beginning of the budget status, page two seventy-two in the agenda, is where he's getting that number.
I don't know why, that is an error. Yeah, oh, okay, sorry, we did make some changes to that, so you're correct, it should equal four hundred and twenty-seven thousand.
Okay.
So that is my error, thank you for catching that, and I did not see it.
Okay, excellent, but then to the other part about, don't we still need to actually appropriate the seven million, one hundred some odd thousand?
So council adopted a twenty-five, twenty-six biennial budget, which, uh, Jana, you can correct me if I'm wrong, included eight point six five million dollars towards this project. So council has already appropriated eight point six five million dollars towards this project.
Some follow-up.
Johnson?
Yeah, so follow-up on that then, so that was an appropriation, it's not one of those things where there's some bucket of money, and we said it goes to these kinds of projects. This is an appropriation that council already did for this contract.
For this project, correct.
For this project, and does it count as being an appropriation for this contract if we approved it for the project? Those are two different things, that's why I'm asking.
What was the difference?
The project versus contract.
So the, all contracts are included in the total project budget, so we had built into project budgets into our ordinance, uh, that council adopted at the October of last year. Uh, the eight point six five is intended to capture every sort of expense associated with the project, including this contract. Um, so that's intended to be included as a part of this. When you're looking at this shortfall there, we will likely need to go back with the biennial budget amendment to increase the project budget in order to cover what that anticipated shortfall is. So we haven't spent everything, so we're trying to account for any sort of expenses that we've currently incurred as well as what we potentially would incur, uh, which is what the encumbered section that we have as a part of this table overall, and we're trying to figure out what is our forecasted difference. And then we'll likely come back with a budget amendment in order to true that up with that forecasted difference that you see here.
Okay, so just to be clear, we, as a council, did appropriate those X number of millions of dollars back then.
Yes.
And that what is now needed is an additional appropriation.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, I just want to make sure that I understood what we were doing.
Let's keep in mind that the biennial budget was also basically a placeholder because we hadn't completed the utility rate study at that time. So there's a whole bunch of truing up that we'll have to do once the utility rate study has been approved. And so I'm sure Jana, after that, will likely come back with a budget amendment to make sure that everything matches and reconciles to each other.
Because we have to approve that.
Mayor Pro Tim Howie?
Okay, two things, one, um, I've never had the bank pay my mortgage. Okay, to say this is funded by increasing the loan is again saying this is funded by the bank, it is not, it is funded by our rates. So please change how we present that because it's driving me nuts, okay? Two, this is expected to go four hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars over what we originally budgeted for. How are we going to adj, what are we going to adjust to get that four hundred and twenty-seven on the plate? What comes off to get this on the plate? I, tell me, I need to hear that analysis. Because if I do it after the fact, that's just gonna, I'm backing into higher rates, and I don't want to back in, I want to walk in, eyes wide open, if we need to up the rates.
So we have two issues, we have the cash flow issue, which is helped by the loan.
Yep.
And then we have the ongoing funding, which is rate funded. And in this instance, we did not consider, um, one point seven eight five million of the loan within the rate study. So this project is increasing, the city contribution in twenty twenty-five is increasing by approximately eight hundred and fifty-six thousand. So this increase, that's not saying it quite the right way. The project is increasing, but the loan has increased more, so the impact on the cash flows in the current biennium isn't as harmful as it might have been. And yes, we will have to fund that ongoing payment, um, of approximately four hundred thousand annually to fund this loan. What will we delay? That's really what it comes down to, we can either, I, increase our rates, or we can delay projects, because all of these projects are scheduled because of a system, system plans. So I think that's our option, is that we're going to have to delay some projects, we're going to have to add a little bit of space so that we can fund this. We're not funding a hundred percent of this shortfall in this current biennium though, I, I would consider it something under a hundred thousand. Um, and that's assuming we were paying the whole loan value immediately, it won't work out that way, it's going to slowly build. But I hope that answers part of your question at least.
Part of it, it, peace, I do understand, I mean, we have a loan that does finances and we can spread that increased cost over a portion or the totality of that loan. I still want to know, what are we, what are we moving out, what are we changing? In near term to address, you may say that time-based, it's not the full four hundred thousand, but it's whatever the next biennial impact is for this. What are we doing to bring this on the, on the board?
Well, I would say start off with that the, the full cost of the project is not realized yet, it's those, some of those, uh, the costs of this are allocations towards, say, city labor, right? I think we've over allocated budget for city labor. I think that, that we have something like half a million dollars, you know, allocated for city labor, we're not going to come anywhere near that. Because it's really Andrew is the only one who's working on this project at a third of his time, there's no way he's going to come up with the, you know, that, we're not going to spend that much money. Uh, you know, in the end, I guess, we won't know exactly what that's going to be, but, you know, I would assume using these numbers. You know, if we have this four hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollar deficit, that we're going to have to delay other projects. Now, we've already planned to delay some projects, uh, for instance, the projects crossing the river with our utilities. Yeah, we'll have to, uh, delay other projects, I have not identified which projects we're going to delay yet. This is kind of a late-breaking issue, uh, for me, so, uh, we'll certainly plan to do that, we're not going to go over budget. As far as estimating costs, you know, we do in, primarily, we do pretty good, I mean, we are over on some and under on others. If we consistently overestimated the cost of projects, that's not a very efficient way to do things. If we're, we're tracking, and we've kind of, I think we demonstrated this to you before, that, you know, on some projects, we're under, and some projects, we're over, but in general, we're pretty good at. And this is one case where we are having a very difficult time, this is a time when, you know, with the, the threat of tariffs. We don't even have tariffs yet, or maybe we, not many, but just the threat of tariffs frightens contractors. Ten percent immediately, right off the top on everything is what they're estimating. And so, uh, you can anticipate that moving forward with all projects, as long as these, this threat of tariffs or this uncertainty regarding tariffs and the economic situation, uh, that we're going to have these issues with money, and we're going to have to push projects back just to stay within our budgets and within our means.
Council Benson?
So what, what happens, what happens with that? If, uh, people get skittish and they say, we're, we're upping our rates ten percent on tariffs, and then they do the project, the tariffs never come. What happens with that ten percent that they up the, uh, the project budget?
Contractor will essentially keep that money. But they all have to, see, they're all bidding in this, it's a consistent process, right? So, you know, what they will show us is that, you know, they, they, they used every bit of it, but the bid is the bid. Right. So if they come in underbid.
No.
No. Really, that's not really true, I wouldn't say that.
No, hang on.
So if, if, if they, if they increase their rates by ten percent based on, on tariffs that they're saying might come, and the tariffs never come, and somehow they manage to have spent all the, all of that money, then, you know, yeah, square that circle for me.
Yeah, so a certain percent, a certain amount of, well, the way a bid, if you look at a bid schedule, the way it's broken out, right? There's some unit values in there, right, if you're going to buy rock, you know, gravel, you know, you can purchase that, or you can have them bid, uh, price per ton based on some tonne adjustment, right? But so much of it is for equipment, uh, a lot of, you know, for, it's a whole HVAC, you know, we will lump it all, all HVAC into one thing, right? So the cost for HVAC is going to be X, they're not going to give us a breakdown on how much they paid on every piece of equipment. They're billing you for what it costs to furnish and install. So if, if, if they come in, if they can actually build it for less than their bid amount, then that's money that they keep.
So we have Council Watten, and then Mayor Pro Tim Howie.
Thank you. I, I understand where you're coming from, Councilmember Benson, but I, I think it's, it comes back to risk and, and, but here's my question to Mr. Hamlin, and that is, what is our risk if we just said, okay, we approved this project, but we put it off a year? Because we went through this period of COVID, went, when prices went through the roof, um, the bidders didn't know where the prices would land. They have to make enough of a margin, because otherwise, the, the, the chances is, are that, you know, they put their business at risk and, and nobody's going to underbid what the, the real costs are. Are there constraints that we have to do this project starting this year? Or can we phase it in over a period of a year and, and go back and, and re-bid? That, and, so those are some things that I want to have a better understanding.
Yeah, a compliance order, we have to have the project completed by June thirtieth of twenty twenty-six.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim Howie?
Yeah, and we did all that, okay, guys, nowhere in any of these bid documents does it say tariff premium.
Right.
Okay, so I want you to talk in facts, the facts are, we had three bidders, this is the lowest responsible bidder, and we're suggesting that we go with that. The fact is that the bid that we receive is four hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars above what we originally thought this was going to cost. The rest of that is noise, red herring, wild goose, whatever you're going, shouldn't be in the conversation here, guys. It, it's, unless you can point to it in the bid, it's inappropriate to assume what are the assumptions that each individual bidder puts into this. Okay, you're reading into it, it, then, again, nowhere does it say tariff premium. Okay? So, we got a bid, four hundred and twenty-seven thousand over what we did, uh, what we expected. We have to do this, I'm, I'm not opposed to this, what I'm driving for is some finance and some uh, program management hygiene, that when we see these come up, we have the conversation upfront of how we're going to adjust for this versus having the conversation at time when we're doing rates, which at that stage, it's too late. But again, I'm back to my same question, I need to understand, we're putting four hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars additional on the budget, what adjusts now to do that? And I, it, I, I haven't heard solid statements yet, Jeff, I'm sorry.
Council Johnson?
Okay, so, uh, I wanted to go back to my, uh, original line of questioning and just go, I think that I actually got it wrong, but I think we had a good discussion anyway about it. Uh, and that is what we're actually doing in this bill, I believe that all that this does is it, uh, awards the reclaimed water, uh, distribution improvements to, uh, AH2, right? But I don't think that it actually does the appropriation, unless it does both, but I don't think that the motion said to appropriate an additional four hundred some odd thousand.
No, so there would be a separate agenda bill that we would have to bring back at a later date that would then amend the budget, the twenty-five, twenty-six biennial budget to increase the appropriation amount here. Uh, we're just speaking to it in the budget summary statement, often you might do budget amendments quarterly, for example. Once you get kind of a sufficient number, you would tend to bring it back to council for approval, but if council approves this, the Jana would have the responsibility to go back, write a budget amendment, bring that to council for approval, to true it up with this agenda bill that council would approve.
So that was the FYI, that we're going to have to bring in an additional appropriation to you guys. But what this action does is just approve the contract, and it doesn't actually have really anything to do with, uh, the budget, other than we're saying, you got it. Now, we have to talk about the budget, of course.
You're halfway committing.
Yeah.
You've contracted this out, you're, we're going to have to pay it somehow.
That's true, that's a fair statement, I'm just saying that we're not doing anything with the budget here, I mean, we're kind of forcing ourselves to eventually, but, um, but this action itself doesn't do that, so, just wanted to clarify that.
Council Cotton?
I think it means that we're going to have to go back and review CIPs again and see what we can, coming down the road as we're having more things. This project has to be done, we all know that. But I think it means that, do we need to make some more? But I think it means that, do we need to make some more decisions? I don't think this is the place or the time to do that right now, but certainly have it be on our radar that we need to go back and look at all the information that staff has already provided us about priorities and upcoming budget, um, CIPs for the budget. And, you know, maybe make some more hard decisions about what do we need to push back even a bit more or not. So I just don't think this is the time for us to do that.
We're, we're aware of it, obviously. We know.
Also be aware of the conversation, the conversation we had in regards to the rates. There was very limited room to adjust projects because they were already committed, already contracted. Okay, I don't want to get into that condition again, just walking into it. If we're going to do that, I want us aware that these, these projects are going to eventually drive rates unless there are other adjustments. Let's make that decision upfront versus behind, because usually behind you don't have as many options. But I agree, this needs to move forward.
I want to hear what Dylan has to say.
Was he twitching?
Councilor Hallway actually did a very good job of saying almost everything I was going to say. Uh, the only thing I was going to add is as, uh, the detail that I just want to add is there's not a lot of projects in the sewer to be pulling from and moving around. I just want you to note that. And this is an expensive project. We knew that. That's why we were kind of seeing that, like, very high rate in 2025. It's because of this project, right? The other aspect of it that I want to just be aware of is that there's a kind of criticality to this one. There's criticalities to other projects too and the timing that we place. Now, the one thing that we don't know is let's say the project that we have scheduled for 2026 or 2027, we don't actually have a, we have a, a guess as to how much it costs. That's what our CIP produced. Produced our best guess as to that number. We don't know what that is yet. So I don't know how far we need to push the future project. But I do, can tell you that if we move forward with this and it goes more than we anticipate, we will be limited in the next choice, right? We keep, if we keep stacking choices, we have to account for it. So at that time, we can adjust scope maybe. Uh, there's definitely considerations for that. Um, and that, given that this one is highly critical, the next one being a touch less critical gives us a touch more wiggle room. There's also loans, bonds and details like that that were considered for 2025 that are going to be difficult to, it could be considered as part of this, but I'll leave that aside. But just, that's, yeah. Councilor Hall, Councilmember Hallway was, was very right, so.
You don't have to say that.
Yeah, don't, don't say that.
I'll say that that's, that's our biggest challenge, is getting that right, right? The cost of construction and the cost of materials. It, uh, you know, 10% change can blow budgets completely out of the water. We do our best to, to guess at what it's going to be, you know, two years, five years, 10 years down the line. Uh, but you can't predict a pandemic and you can't predict supply chain shortages, you know, that are on the, you know, post pandemic or tariffs. You know, there's things that will happen guaranteed that you can't predict. And, and so we have to adjust this to some degree as we go.
Is there any other discussion? Are you ready, ready to vote? Right. So, all in favor, CI?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? And it passes unanimously, AB 25-048, awarding reclaimed water distribution system improvements. Next item is AB 25-049, on-call water and sewer design services. Councilor Benson, would you please read the introduction motion?
This agenda bill seeks to approve, uh, seeks approval to select RH2 engineering for upcoming on-call services needed to support the water and sewer utility. The city's water system plan identifies priority capital improvement projects and system capacity based on 2017 data. Updated system modeling and evaluations is needed to consider capacity for new development and scope upcoming capital improvements. Approved resolution 1714, selecting RH2. The motion is to approve resolution, uh, uh, resolution 1714, selecting RH2 for on-call water and sewer design services.
Second.
Second.
Okay, it's moved by Councilor Benson and second by Councilor Washington. And there's no longer public in council chambers, and so we move on to discussion. Council, do you have any questions for Parks and Public Works Director, Jeff Hamlin? Or any further discussion? See none? When move to vote?
What was the, what was the issue on this one?
Same one, not going to.
Same one?
I.
You don't want to have the same conversation again?
No, I want to get out of here. It's a reasonable time tonight. So, I mean, same thing. Maybe we should have considered pulling this back a little bit, the adjust for the last one. But I, we've had that conversation. They've got a homework to do.
This is another one of those mission critical ones that, uh, Dylan Campbell would say we can't.
I, I will say that, that this kind of work, this kind of bridges the gap from CIP concept to design, right? Sometimes it for us to get good costs, for us to develop reasonable costs, we're going to need this sort of engineering work to kind of help us get to good decisions, to acquire good data and to make good decisions going forward. So in our mind, this is stuff that we're going to need anyway. And if we can capture it ahead of time, then we have a budget to work under and it's more efficient. We can work quickly with it. All right, so, uh, you know, we recommend doing this. Uh, we actually asked RH2. We sat down with them and worked up a, a scope, considering what we're going to have to do over the next three years. And this, uh, accounts for, you know, all that we, well, not everything, but mostly, most of what we think we need for the next three years.
Any other comments? See none? All in favor, CI?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? It's unanimous and AB 25-049, on-call water and sewer design services have, were approved. Next is AB 25-050, amendment for water reclamation facility phase three services during construction. Councilor Benson, would you please read the introduction motion?
The WRF phase three improvements have increased treatment capacity, enhanced performance and replaced critical components that were nearing the end of their expected service life. Basin one process and SCADA commissioning is underway and improvements at Kimball-Crete Lift Station are scheduled to begin this spring. During construction, necessary outscope services were encountered and are presented in amendment number four. The proposed motion is to approve amendment number four to the agreement with RH2 Engineering for services during construction.
Second.
Been moved by Councilor Benson and second by Councilor Washington. And again, is, um, no longer any public in council chambers for public comments. So is there any discussion?
No, other than there's, you know, $114,000 left. I mean, can we take this one down to its existing costs and use the 100 to offset the 400? But again, we had the conversation. You got homework.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions? See none? Move to a vote. All in favor, CI?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? It's unanimous and AB 25-050, amendment for water reclamation facility phase three services during construction have passed. Is there any further report for Parks and Public Works?
Yes, the Parks and Public Works people are fantastic. Thank you very much for everything you do.
Good job.
Is there any report for Finance Administration Committee?
Um, I get, uh, just one. Um, so, well, one and then one committee, the whole but. So we discussed as part of our retreat and also FNA of, uh, more community engagement and along those lines, possibly the council, uh, intentionally participating in public events. So over the next two weeks, um, April 18th, there's the teen flashlight event, which starts at 8:30, although I'm not sure that actually has a kickoff more than just a run. Uh, but there is, 4/19th is Easter egg hunt at 10 a.m. But I think there's a, there's a kind of a opening ceremony in that, an opportunity for, uh, to acknowledge council and for us to be there. Uh, if people have questions, there's also the Arbor Day event on 4/26 from, uh, 10 to 2 p.m. There's probably two really opportunities in there for us to be there, the kickoff at 10, at 10 o'clock. And then, uh, Mayor, I think you do a pro, a proclamation at 1?
Closer to 10, but yes. At the beginning.
Oh, you're going to do it at the beginning?
Yeah.
Okay, the, on the calendar, it had the proclamation at 1 o'clock. Oh, but if you'll do it at the beginning, so probably, uh, same thing, we ought to, uh, that's probably the opportunity for council visibility to get the bullseye on ourselves. So question is, um, are there, council members already planning to attend the, the bunny hop egg hunt?
That's on the 8th.
That's the 19th.
That's on the 19th at 10 a.m. Saturday?
Probably.
Okay, so.
Can I, can I let you know here?
Well, you don't have, I mean, if we have, it's, I'm not trying to force us all to go to every one of these, just that we have the council representation, right?
Yeah, interject, don't forget the, uh, the bow wow egg hunt that immediately follows the Easter egg hunt. That's across the street at 10:15 over at the, uh,
Three Rivers?
The Three Rivers, the dog park over there.
That was not on our count, on our web calendar. I missed the dog section of the calendar, I guess.
I think it's by Snoqualmie Valley Pet. It's a, that one's recie.
Okay, anybody into, and plan on attending that one?
Yes.
Okay, will you? Will you represent at least that one? And for the Arbor Day, um, unless there are objections, I'll go ahead and show up at 10 o'clock that day. I did it one time before with Phil.
That Councilor Watten is too.
Huh? You'll be there too? Okay. We'll be there to cover that. All right, so that's into FNA.
Anything else?
Um, I was going to do the other one. Uh, well, committee, the whole's next. So let's do one more thing. Um, as we presented, or as Drew quite skillfully presented the proposal to North Bend on,
Oh my God.
Continuum Leaf Services.
Effort.
There, there was a.
And Captain Horace.
Yes.
There was a question from North Bend, rhetorical at that time, if we would support, uh, we had as part of the proposal, the Snowpack, the, uh, advisory committee. Um, their question to us, would it, would we support a more frequent meeting than quarterly? I guess I'd like, oh, well, I will motion that we advise North Bend that we would support a frequency of once a month if they so choose.
I think the request was every other month.
Okay, or every other month. I think at this stage, with the, the safety chair, sorry, can set the frequency with his counterpart over in North Bend. But that we advise them, we're ready to start Snowpack under the existing ILA, not have to wait for the commitment of the, of the proposal. Can I get a, that's a motion?
A motion, okay.
It's a wobbly motion, but it's a motion.
So it's been moved by Mayor Pro Tim Hallway, second by Councilor Christensen to begin Snowpack net.
Yeah.
Snoqualmie Police Advisory Committee. So it's starting that now under the current contract rather than waiting for the new contract.
Right.
And having it more frequent than what we were proposing, which was quarterly. So I think we could work out, you know, together what, what they would like to see, right?
We may not have agenda for once.
Quarterly or every other month or something like that. So we have Councilor Benson and then Councilor Watten.
Uh, it seems to me if they're, if they were requesting every other month, then I would be in favor of acquiescing to that request rather than upping it to monthly personally. Because it would, you know, and, and, um, and I don't know that, and no offense to the current chair of that committee, he won't be the last and, uh, it would probably be more difficult for a future chair to scale back to every other month if, uh, if it was made monthly, uh, to begin with.
Councilor Watten?
I, I appreciate their, their eagerness for having this joint advisory. I think it's great. I think at this point, since we're still in contract negotiations potentially with them, the quarterly is sufficient. It is something to point out that it is perhaps more robust than our competition is offering. I don't know what their frequency is. I do know that the frequency of North Bend's public safety version is once a month. Ours is twice a month. Um, we do have a bigger scope because we also have a full-service fire department that is part of public safety. And, you know, I appreciate the fact that they'd like to do this more frequently and we can do that as we move forward. But at this point, we don't have the contract. And, uh, I, I think there's probably other things that, uh, in our contract that they may find more attractive, and I'm just putting that out for discussion. But I, I definitely, I'm glad that they like the idea of having a joint advisory, which we have done in the past.
Councilor Christensen?
Um, I, I'll start off by saying it was wonderful to see every single council member there at that meeting. Um, just listening to the feedback there, they made very clear that they wanted more information and they wanted to be able to have their thoughts and feelings reflected and, and being heard by police and heard by us as well. And so I think that this is our opportunity to show them that, yes, we are here, we are wanting to have those conversations and that their voices will be heard, whether that's going forward now through the contract negotiations into a, the negotiation in the future, or even just as we are still operating under the existing ILA. I think that we need to prove to them that, that we are here and wanting to have those conversations and so that we can better facilitate the information share back and forth.
Mayor Pro Tim Hallway and then Councilor Washington.
So at multiple times in the question period, North Bend stated, Snoqualmie, you're not, you are not communicating. That was one. Two, they asked us if we would do a higher frequency of the Snowpack meeting. To not react to that and not to show them that we want to have opportunities to talk to them. Now, I, I mean, i- if the Public Safety Committee does not want to take the onus responsibility, let us know. We can make other arrangements. But I cannot accept not going back to them saying, we're ready to talk.
Councilor Washington?
Yeah, um, I echo, um, Councilmember Christensen's, uh, comments and, um, a repeating theme that we heard, uh, last Tuesday night was lack of communication from Snoqualmie. So, um, I too think the frequency of having the meetings every other month would even help maybe facilitate getting to the agreement of the ILA. So I, I too am in favor of, um, the frequency of the meetings, at, at least having it every other month per their request.
Councilor Cotton?
I agree with both council members, uh, Christensen and Washington and, um, and Pro Tim, uh, Hallway, that guy over there. Every other month, I think, to start if, and see how it goes. I mean, but at least show them that we are willing to meet them at least halfway.
Councilor Johnson?
Yeah, for myself, I did want to hear from, uh, the committee that actually sits, uh, since I am not one, I didn't want to speak for that committee. But, uh, having heard what I, I think was the, um, uh, the opinion of the committee, starting Snowpack sounds like a great idea and it sounds like maybe meeting halfway at the every other month uh, might be more feasible than trying to go to every month. So I think that, that, that's what I feel like I'm hearing from a fellow council members.
Councilor Christensen?
And I'd also just recommend to my fellow council members also to try to make the effort to meet folks for coffee or do whatever so that we can go ahead and do it informally, both on our own as well as through the committee process as well. I think that it's important that we do both because clearly there's a disconnect. because clearly there's a disconnect and we need to address it as quickly as possible.
Is there any other discussion? Councilor Benson?
Yeah, I just, I, I think that it would be hard for us to give enough attention to our, to our individual responsibilities, our individual cities' responsibilities to public safety and our fire department and and police department if we're, if we are devoting one of our public safety meetings each month to Snow Pack. So I, I'm, I'm all for increasing communication. But I think we also have to remember that we do have other responsibilities with regard to public safety here in Snoqualmie. So I would not recommend, at least to begin with, going beyond every other month.
Councilor Johnson?
So I thought that the motion on the table was every month. So I'm wondering if it needs to be amended.
I'm willing to accept every other month. I'm willing to accept frequency to be determined by identified Snow Pack members, but I'm willing to go every other month on the motion. Who seconded me?
I did.
Will you accept that?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, so we're ready to vote then? So the motion is to start Snow Pack under the current contract and at some frequency, most likely every other month. Councilor Christensen?
In, in terms of the language on that, I don't know if we want to say to start Snow Pack under the current contract. I would just state.
Start now.
Yes, that, that we would be moving forward with it. Somebody needs to clean up the language on that, but I would not say under the existing contract because it is not a part of that contract.
I, I think that this is gonna answer my question. Go ahead.
Yeah, so this is not on the agenda. If we want, we could do a motion to modify the rules and add it to the agenda. But I, I would also throw out there that I think there, there could just be a general direction to staff to facilitate Snow Pack at the frequent, at a reasonable frequency that North Bend staff is desiring.
So moved.
We can vote, right?
We're not voting.
It's for a direction.
I'm voting. Aye.
Loudly.
He's like, there, there is a direction.
We, we can vote if you want to do a motion to suspend the rules and add it to the agenda, but I, I think there can just be a direction.
That was my intent. Alright, so I do motion to suspend the rules and add it to the agenda. May I have a second?
Second. So it's been moved by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway and second by Councilor Christensen to add Snow Pack to the agenda. All in favor of seeing aye?
Aye, aye, aye.
Any opposed name? So, so it is added to the agenda. And then we have Councilor Christensen, you have a comment?
Yeah, I think I would like the conversations to happen at a council or committee level instead of necessarily at the administrative level. But I'm open to having more conversations about that. It's just the, the feedback was coming directly from their council, so I would like to make their voices heard on that in terms of frequency instead of having it be necessarily set by administration. But I could be convinced otherwise if people have strong feelings.
Councilor Johnson?
Yeah, so the proposal or the motion was for us to start Snow Pack under the current I L A. I mean, the one that is currently in place, not one that they have adopted. However, that doesn't say anything about what it is. So I wonder if we need to add as described in the proposed I L A or something like that. Because otherwise, what is it?
Well, I think we, I think we and they know.
You think what?
I, I have no objection, but I think we and they know what Snow Pack is.
I'll just look for any advice if, if that's a reasonable concern or not.
So our current contract, I have to go back and refresh my memory. We don't have a Snow Pack or Snow Tech in it, but there's nothing that prevents us from facilitating that under the current contract. However, if North Bend says they don't want to do it, that's fine. They, they can make that choice because they're not, they're not obligated to. But there seemed to be a desire, like has been noted, for communicate, more robust communication. And we can definitely honor that and, you know, attempt to create and start having the Snow Tech and Snow Pack meetings.
So we're gonna ask if any comments? Councilor Johnson?
Okay, so then, just so that everyone is clear as to what Snow Pack is, then I do think that maybe we should modify the motion to say as described in the proposed I L A. So that's a motion.
By Councilor Johnson, second by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway to to describe it as in the proposed contract.
Right.
Okay. Okay, so.
That's a little dinosaur.
Yeah, that's a little dinosaur.
So anything else? Moving to vote on that?
Yep.
All in favor of seeing aye?
Aye.
And then back to the original.
Big dinosaur.
Big dinosaur, where we are putting on Snow Pack under the current I L A. And.
Based on the definition of the future I L A.
Every other month.
On the frequency, we'll determine the frequency of most likely every other month. Okay. All in favor of seeing aye?
Aye.
Opposed name? Okay, so it's unanimous to start doing that, so, great.
Nothing further from me.
Thank you.
Sure.
I don't know.
Okay, so next item is Mayor's Report. So several things. First of all, on March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, I issued the rescission of proclamation of emergency twenty-four dash twenty-three dated November twentieth, twenty twenty-four, which was declared immediately following the bomb cyclone. Regarding North Bend and the contract tomorrow night, North Bend Council will be discussing with staff. Staff has scored the R F Ps and so they would be discussing that scoring that happened and more discussion about, I think, probably both King County Sheriff and also Snoqualmie Services. And so several of us are planning to attend that. So we would encourage council, if you're curious, to also attend that. I, I attended a Wash Dot State Route eighteen update meeting. And so a couple of different things, they're continuing to work on the on and off ramps at the diverging diamond interchange. And that has required some nighttime and weekend lane and ramp closures, but they're getting close to completing those. They also have some traffic revisions at the southeast one oh four street where they're actually now putting in an interim traffic light because it was somewhat dangerous. So that is further up on State Route eighteen. It's gonna be past the, I guess, freeway and further up on the left if you're, if you're heading State Route eighteen. So that was, they had some different changes there and there was a lot of input from neighbors and others. And based on that, they listened and added an interim traffic light. This spring, they're planning on switching eastbound and westbound State Route eighteen traffic to the new lanes between Deep Creek and Raging River to allow for work on the existing lanes. And also, most likely, it will be switching over to the new bridges. And so you'll start driving on the new river, Raging River and Deep Creek bridges. They think that diverging diamond interchange with all this progress should be complete. They're saying like, you know, this spring or probably early summer. And then they say Route eighteen itself should be completed this summer. So all four lanes up to, I believe it's Deep Creek. So Wash Dot is their, they're offering that they would be happy to come to a council or any community meeting and just kind of talking about this project, especially when they start opening the diverging diamond interchange. So if you're interested, you know, we can get them on our schedule and have them come in at some point to talk to council. Does everyone find with that?
Absolutely.
Sounds good.
Absolutely.
So we will do that. And regarding the rest of State Route eighteen, you know, I did publicly comment or testified at one of, at the House Transportation Committee. We need to continue voicing that State Route eighteen is very important, that we need that additional funding for the rest of State Route eighteen. So. So that, talk with your legislatures about that. And then also, both the House and the Senate, they're working on their capital budgets right now. They did include the, the YMCA's youth recreational grant for one point two million, which actually is for our community center expansion. But they have not included additional funding for our project. So I've reached out to them. So if you can reach out to them and try to get additional funding, even a million dollars would be, would be great. We submitted our application for the King County Parks Levy a couple of weeks ago for the community center for the aquatics grants. And we had quite nice letters of support. We had them from the school district, from Encompass, from the Snoqualmie Valley Health, and then from the mayors of Isakawas, Mamish, Carnation, and Skakomish, put together a letter of support from the mayors. So we are looking forward to hopefully we'll hear good news maybe later this spring. And then I think funding would be available probably in the fall after King County Council votes on it. So with that, that's all I have. Is there any community liaison reports that you have, regional reports? Councilor Cotton?
I swear this is the last time I'm talking. But just a, a kind of status quo with the Snoqualmie Valley Health Public Health District. The meeting last week, they still plan on shovels in the ground in May for the hub up here on the hill. And also, they're hoping to have the North Bend Clinic up and running by September at the very latest.
Great, thank you for the input. Councilor Cotton, or Christensen, sorry.
Alright, so for S C A, there are still six openings. So if anybody would like to go on one of the S C A boards, there are positions open for the Advisory Council on Aging and Disability Services, Domestic Violence Initiative Regional Task Force, the Joint Recommendations Committee, and Regional Transit Committee is also seeking one. We were briefed and had a pretty robust discussion a couple of weeks back in terms of the Parks Levy. There has been an update on that. It's going forward to the King County Council for voting tomorrow, the fifteenth. But based on some of the feedback from the S C A, the proposed levy was revised to lower the levy rate and to increase the direct pass-through to cities, which would be great. We would potentially be receiving more funding. And they're also going to require transparent reporting on the geographic measures of equity as well. So that's kind of the update on that and we should know more tomorrow. But that will obviously be on the ballot in August.
Councilor Watten?
Yeah, just a couple of quick updates. We did have a review of the R F U for our parcel nine zero three three and for affordable workforce housing and that discussion is ongoing. We were joined with, by Jonathan Pearlstein and Tim Locke as kind of our subject experts. And more to come on that. The second one is, we went over to the mustard seed. That was Susan Kingsbury Como and from the Mount Si Senior Center and Jesse Reynolds. He's the Community Development Director for King County Department of Local Services. Amazing facility. It is something that we definitely need here for senior housing. But that was financed through USDA rural development, which is a mechanism we have yet to use in the valley or in King County, and it is available to us out here. So more on that and that kind of helps to fill that missing middle housing piece that we're always trying to find. And then lastly, and this is an outcropping, all, all these really came out of the Economic Development Commission of Snoqualmie. And that's, we're getting additional funding for the Snow Valley Innovation Center to help entrepreneurs and startup businesses through the Department of Commerce. They're giving us a grant for twenty-five thousand dollars to help build that out as well as our ongoing automation of the Snow Valley Jobs Board. That's been around since twenty twenty-one. We get twelve thousand job seekers every year. Over a hundred local employers, including City of Snoqualmie, have used that. And it will help make sure that that's an ongoing thing. So great work by the City of Snoqualmie and we're having an impact everywhere.
Your time's up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Johnson?
Just wanted to let council know that the Planning Commission is currently looking at the potential colors that are the various color schemes for downtown businesses in an initial analysis of a number of cities, almost a dozen cities. Ours were by far the most restrictive. I think we have like two sets and you have to take the whole set of colors. So we're looking at potentially loosening up those restrictions and giving our businesses a little bit more freedom to, to express themselves and to stand out.
Thank you. Anything else? Councilor Christensen?
I'd like to make a plug, even though I'm not technically the liaison, but Kat and I, excuse me, Councilor Cotton and I are continuing to attend the downtown merchants meetings. And just a reminder, please encourage people to patronize our small businesses, especially for lunch and other things. They are really, really hurting and anything that we can do to help support them, I think we really need to be pushing and doing.
Thank you.
Very good.
Moving on, we have City Administrator, Camp Chambles, would you share the department reports, please?
Sure. Communications Division, we actually had a sunny day right after a whole bunch of rain, so I sent them out to the falls. And they shot a video and it got shared three hundred and fourteen thousand times. So it was a good fall's day. Fire Department responded to a hundred and fifty-one incidents in March. Sixty-five percent of those were for EMS, thirty-five percent were fire service related. All the good stuff about times and inspections are in here. Human Resources Department, I just want to say again, it was said during the state of the city. The city is fully staffed with city, with police officers and firefighters. Good job, Kim.
The other thing that, that was, it actually was part of the Sheriff's Department's presentation to North Bend. They were quite proud that their deputies had I C S one hundred. I just wanted to point out that all your employees have one hundred, two hundred, seven hundred, eight hundred. And all your supervisors are gonna have three hundred and four hundred by the end of summer. So we are, we are well on our way to preparedness over here. Also, I T, they have twenty open tickets. Now, that may, may not seem impressive, but when I tell you that when Fletcher started, there was two hundred and seventy-five open tickets. And it wasn't like it was a list that didn't keep getting added to after every week. That reflects a huge improvement and a huge amount of work. Thank you, Fletcher.
Yay. Well done.
Whoops, I skipped one. My mouse. Okay, splash pad. We may have water flowing tomorrow. Consultants in from Minnesota to start dialing things in. So come out and see me out there tomorrow. And then.
What, sorry, what, what time, City Administrator?
I'll be out there off and on throughout the day, but if you'd like to set up a specific time, we can.
Okay.
Councilor Christensen?
And just, just for clarification, I know the answer to this, but while you're saying that water will be flowing, it will not be available for children to use, just so that we set expectations appropriately. On spring break.
I don't know why this wasn't lining up right. But the other thing I really wanted to point out for Parks Public Works, they, they had sixteen hundred work orders last month across the department. That's a department of forty people in a month, sixteen hundred work orders. And they've already closed eighty thousand one hundred work orders since the program came online in October. So this is just truly recording the amount of work that those special people are doing in that department that I got to see firsthand for about a year. So I wanted to highlight that. There's also an extensive section about the the work program, alternative work program, and what they got accomplished last month with nine workdays. And then finally, last but not least, our crime numbers are continuing to show a decline from last year.
Excellent.
The trend is continuing both in Snoqualmie and North Bend.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you for sharing. Okay. Okay, moving on. Next, we have an executive session pursuant to RCW forty two dot three zero dot one one zero one I to discuss the legal council, with legal council representing the agency matters relating to potential litigation lasting approximately fifteen minutes. Those attending executive session includes City Administrator Chambles and City Attorney Burke. Um, City Council will take a five minute recess and reconvene here, um, for the executive session. No action is anticipated following the conclusion of the executive session and recording the meeting will cease at this point once I've finished reading. Um, council adjourn directly from the executive session and not return to open session. The city clerk will be informed of the concluding time, which will be reflected in the meeting minutes. And so we will, I guess we've, like, we should complete our executive session by probably no later than nine forty. That's including a five minute break so we can clear the room. Thank you.